Good evening and welcome to the 26th meeting for the Milton Planning Board of Fiscal Year 2024. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introductions of the Planning Board and our staff. If we'd like to start, Cheryl?
Cheryl Togaias, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And my Sean is not with us this evening, Sean Fahy. So Meredith Hall serving his chair this evening. And now for our staff joining us tonight in person.
Julia Getten, Clerk.
Yes, and on Zoom, Tim?
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development. Just want to let you know, I'm in the new home office. We haven't quite figured out the lighting. So rather than have me very spooky on camera, I'm just going to stay off camera for now.
Great, thank you. And Josh?
Josh Eckert Lee, Assistant Director.
Great, thank you all. We can now begin with our administrative items. The first item is the approval of our minutes. We have four sets of minutes. One 11, January 11th, the 17th, the 25th, and the 30th. I have not had really a chance to review the 30th, and Cheryl wasn't there, so I'm going to ask to defer those. But has everyone had a chance to look at the 11th, the 17th, and the 25th?
I have, and I have a few, I have a couple edits.
Okay.
So on the 11th, I think it's item number six, old business. Almost the last sentence says, Town Council has said that if the referendum vote is a no town meeting vote, which supported the zoning will prevail. I think that's meant to be yes instead of the word no.
Yes. That, I saw the statement.
Excellent.
Thank you for.
So we're going to make that a yes?
That's a yes.
And then?
Really confuse people.
The 25th, I was okay with. Oh, I'm sorry, the 25th, I have, it's more of a question. So old business again, second paragraph down, it says, having the SBA upgrades placed within the rules and regulations of the town. Is that the same as the bylaws, the rules and regulations of the town?
That should be the rules and regulations, rules and rights of the planning board.
Oh, okay, that explains it then.
I'm sorry, let me see.
Great, that clarifies it.
That is the?
That was 20.
20.
I'm marking these.
Yeah, old business.
On here, Julia.
You can have these if you want. You could have that if you want, the other. No, all right, this one.
All right, that's great for the, so for the 25th, and?
And I'm good with the 30th.
I hadn't had a chance to look at the 30th, so it was just the other, the 17th was the other.
I'm good with the 17th as well.
17th was good.
I'm good with those three, yep.
All right, so if I could have a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th, 17th, and the 25th with the?
Amendments made tonight?
Amendments made tonight, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Yes.
So I?
Aye.
Thank you. And discussion of the next meeting dates. Our next meeting is scheduled after tonight for the 22nd of February?
Actually, do we have one on Saturday?
I'm sorry, we do have a site, yes, we do have a site walk, which Tim can maybe talk about too. That will be at 9:00 a.m. and that will?
Is there a meeting point for that?
That's what I'm looking, what we wrote. We just said 9:00 a.m. site walk at 14, well, 1439 Brush Hill Road.
If Marian is in the room, I don't see her on Zoom. Maybe she's got some more details about that, if you don't mind allowing her to share some of that information.
Yeah, do you want to just comment on that, the site walk this coming Saturday?
Well, there's a pretty big turnaround at the end of that road, which is the 1439 address. So I believe the Planning Board members should be able to drive all the way to the end and pull in one in several different spots. I think there's enough room for everybody. So you should plan to meet at the end of the road. And I also brought copies of the plan marked up with colored lines as requested. So I'll be leaving those with Julia tonight, or anyone who's here tonight can take theirs and, or, and bring extra copies for those who aren't.
Cool.
That's great. Okay, thank you. That's great. So yes, so thank you for making our site walk 9:00 a.m. this Saturday at 1439 Brush Hill Road. And then we have the 22nd of January, excuse me, of February. And then that puts us into the March, which we have not confirmed our dates, but our regular scheduled meeting would be actually the March 18th and the 22nd. I'm sorry, that's Friday. No, that's correct. The 8th and the 22nd also of March, okay.
8th is a Friday?
The 7th. I'm sorry, the 7th, that's what I thought I was looking at.
7th and 21st.
So would it be the 14th?
So it would actually be the 14th, and that would kick it to the 14th and the 28th.
Right.
It's a leap year this year.
I know, yes.
So the dates don't match up like they usually do.
Right. So yes, regular schedule, 14th and the 28th of March, just looking ahead. All right. So our next item on the agenda is Citizens Speak. If there's anyone from the public or on Zoom, we welcome you to come and state your name and address for the record. And we will begin with in person, yes, if you'd like to join us. Welcome. You can get pulled up close to you so that you can, everyone can hear online. That's perfect, good.
My name's Kathleen Tyrell. I live at 169 Whittier Road. And I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. So good evening Chair Hall, good evening Member Davis, Member Togaias, and Member Oldfield. I truly appreciate the opportunity to address the Planning Board. I'm a lifelong resident of Milton. I'm a long-term former town meeting member, and I spent 10 wonderful years as a first grade teacher at the Glover School. I would have preferred to bring my concern to the Select Board, but they are not meeting until after the February 13th ballot vote. So I'm here to bring my concern to your attention regarding a possible serious ethics violation in our town. Yesterday, I came across information that deeply troubled me. It appears that there may have been, and the operative word is may, that there may have been a violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A. This is based on public records, including a property deed recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds and the Town of Milton unofficial property record card. According to these documents, a member of the Select Board is a part owner of a property on Capen Street, which includes a seven-room home. If Article 1 passes, this property's value will increase very significantly as it will be zoned as a three-unit property by right. In light of this information, I believe, at the very least, the ownership interest should have been disclosed. Furthermore, I believe the Select Board member should have recused himself from all deliberations related to MBTA zoning. This would have involved leaving the room during all discussions and ensuring that his absence was reflected in the minutes. In my opinion, this, and I say in my opinion, this Select Board member should not have voted on the zoning at all. Had recusal taken place, our town would not be facing the difficult situation we find ourselves in now. I believe it's worth noting that the Warrant Committee voted nine to five against the zoning, and your board voted four to one against it as well. However, the Select Board voted three to two in favor of the zoning. If recusal had occurred, the Select Board's vote would have been two to two, and this zoning article never would have reached our town meeting. And our town would not be torn apart the way it is now. Additionally, the MBTA reclassification letters may not have been so watered down. I urge you, because you're the only body meeting between now and the election, to consult with Town Council to determine whether the town meeting vote was legal, given these circumstances. Thank you very much for your attention to the matter. I hope you'll take the necessary steps to address this possible ethics violation. And Chair Hall, if you would like, I have the unofficial property record card and the deed as recorded, if you'd like those documents.
Thank you, David. Yes, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak tonight?
We also have Judith Cohen on Zoom, who's had her hand raised.
Okay, great. We can welcome Judith.
Judith, if you can give your name and address.
Hello, can, you can hear me now, right?
Yes, thank you, Judith.
On my hand. So my name is Judith Cohen, and, and I live at 109 Capen Street in Milton. And I am a Milton, I'm a Milton senior, and I work full-time as a housing advocate for families who reside in state-funded shelter. And I'm speaking tonight because I'm strongly in support of a yes vote to comply with the MBTA Community Act's rezoning plan for Milton, as overwhelmingly approved by our town meeting members. And here are my reasons why. And I'm going to start with, number one, it is becoming more and more clear that if a no vote is passed, the legal consequences for the town would be costly, lengthy, and create too much negative publicity. That's not the kind of town I want to live in. Number two, I am well aware that the new rezoning plan, as approved, does little at first to create rental housing for families, including those with more than one child with lower incomes. So I know that for now, that vision will take time to hopefully become a reality. I do commend the town for undertaking the economic feasibility study, which I believe indicates a sincere desire to permit, about 15, to permit 15% of new construction that would occur under the new zoning to be classified as affordable. And what that means and for who it's affordable, that's a whole other discussion. But for Milton, that would be a great and much-needed start to welcoming new neighbors. My third reason is that we are clearly working within a deadline for compliance with the state law. And again, there would be numerous serious consequences if that goal is not met. The town planner and the consulting agency, UTIL, created many iterations of a rezoning plan that recognizes and preserves the character of this town that I know we all love. Town meeting members were encouraged to become very familiar with the complexities of the MBTA Act, of the requirements of the MBTA Act for our classification as a rapid transit community, which does not seem to be able to be reversed. It is, it is absolutely in my, from what I've learned, non-negotiable. And the town meeting members voted accordingly and overwhelmingly to support the current iteration of the rezoning plan. So I think, so I think, my opinion again, that unless the Planning Board can show and convince me that they have a better rezoning plan ready to go by next Tuesday, Milton should not risk the consequences and the fallout of the economic, of the, the economic and legal consequences that would be, that would occur for us, for our town, as made clear by our governor and Attorney General, if we, if a no vote prevails next Tuesday. So with respect for your time and effort, which clearly you, I know you're all working very hard on this issue, but that's my, that's my opinion and why I'm voting yes. And thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Judith.
Welcome.
All right. Josh, anyone else?
Yes, we also have Eric Hockenson.
Okay, welcome, Eric.
Awesome, thank you. This is Eric Hockenson, 583 Elliott Street. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I also am voting yes next Tuesday because I support the zoning that this group had worked on for, for quite some time. And I recognize that the zoning can still be improved. One of the things I've been particularly vocal about is the affordability requirement, which I hope that the board will continue to pursue, and any other necessary improvements that, that the town sees fit. However, I'm also concerned that in the event of a, of a no vote, which again, I hope won't happen, I'm concerned and also curious if the Planning Board and town staff have developed a process and timeline for the development of a compliant zoning bylaw in the event of a no vote next week. Last fall, when asking for, for more time at the Warrant Committee, this board committed to having a compliant zoning bylaw article for the upcoming annual town meeting. And I'm not sure that any progress has been made, or if there is a, a plan and timeline to, to do so. And I'm especially concerned, given the need for the zoning to be substantially different from what we have already developed, if there isn't no vote. So if there's any information that, that could be shared, that would be really helpful to better understand what the, the board's plans are toward moving Milton to compliance regardless of, of next week's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else, Josh?
No other hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, great, thank you. So now at this time, we can move to our public hearing, opening of seven, or the continuance of 79 Pleasant Street Site Plan Modification, continued from January 11th. And we'll welcome Marian.
Good evening.
Good, good evening.
So first of all, the plan that I mentioned for 1439 Brush Hill Road. See the colored lines?
Nice, helpful.
Just going to save out one. Yeah, I'll give you all the copies. So that's for these members who are here tonight. And anyone who isn't here, maybe someone who's coming to the site walk can bring the extra copies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Going to go that way?
For tonight, I hate to visit the Kinko's today. So I did make you copies. I know you look at it on the screen, but if it's helpful, here are copies of the photometric plan in a larger size, easier to look at. And then copies of the site plan. I'll just hold back one of those. You do have the site plan. I did send it electronically. And I, I mean, people have different preferences. Let's see if I can lift the seat up a little bit.
Got it?
Yeah, go down for me. Okay. Mr. Falcone is here tonight, so I'd invite him to come up. And if there's any questions, if that's the Board of Appeals. And I believe Paul Dunn, Paul Gunn, sorry, I believe he's on electronically. He's the engineer. He's also here to help and answer questions if necessary. So when you're ready, I'll just introduce myself.
That's great.
Are you all set?
Go ahead, yes.
Fire away.
So I'm Marion McKetrick, and I've been representing the applicant for this application before the Planning Board. This is for a modification of site plan approval for, I like to call it the Bent's property, easily recognizable. It's a mixed-use property now at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Randolph Avenue. And that was a 2019 special permit approval. And at that time, there was limited parking, and the, the proposal was approved by the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals with that limited parking. We've come back since then with a proposal to add some parking spaces in the adjacent lot, which requires a variance, because the adjacent lot is a residential lot. That hearing is before the Board of Appeals, and we are going back to, to meet with them on February 28th. They really do want to have a pretty good idea where the Planning Board stands, I guess, on this, whether, whether the proposal is complete, whether you're satisfied with the layout and that kind of thing. In fact, to make a final decision, they'll, they'll want a decision from the Planning Board. That's the way they've been doing it recently. But these have been parallel hearings. So my most recent communication with you was to send you an updated site plan dated January 19th, 2024. And we made some additional changes since December, the last update. So we wanted to redo the site plan. And we did need to give you an updated photometric plan, because this plan, this layout for the parking is, has been changed quite a bit. The parking lot has been moved sideways, it's smaller, and so forth. So we wanted to give you a new photometric plan, which does show no lighting overspill onto neighboring properties, which is, the standard isn't actually no lighting overspill, but ideally, it should be no lighting overspill. So what we have for, I don't know that I, I did give you a memo, and I reviewed the application history, because it gets confusing with all the different documents that are submitted. So just briefly, we submitted the application on July 25th, 2023, with a site plan. And then we modified that application several times, and updated site plans were given to the board. There was a first hearing on Thursday, December 14th. That was continued to October 12th, November 9th, and finally, December 14th. And before the December 14th hearing, we did have a site walk with the Planning Board and with neighbors on site. And so subsequent to that site walk, we did some modifications to the site plan, and that plan was submitted. But you didn't have that hearing on the 14th because of a posting error. And we had to, I had to refile the application. So one of the things that I needed to do, and I did it in this memo, is request that the Planning Board incorporate by reference all documents filed in the previous application. So that's one of the purposes of this memo. And the other purpose is just to describe for you changes that we made in this most recent update. And those are that the fence that goes around the parking area now comes slightly around the corner. Thank you, Mr. Davis asked for that, but I'm not sure.
That was?
Or Sean Fahy asked for it. Sorry, yeah.
I'm the, I'm the snow curb guy.
Yes, so it's there on the plan now. We did move the location of the proposed red maple trees a little bit. We moved them away from the lot line, because a neighbor on that lot line said he's worried about all the leaves pouring down towards his property in the fall. We included a note listing the number and species of their green giant arborvitae's and then the red maples that are to be planted, with minimum planting heights, or sizes for the trees. We now show in the plan a designated snow storage area, and we took a berm out so that it would be easier to push snow into that area. And we, we add, this is actually a request of the Board of Appeals. If you look at the plan now, you'll see a dotted line and a note that says, commercial use area, residential use area. Commercial use wants that written. And the Board of Appeals wanted a designated, they're, they're, they're considering whether to grant approval for a limited commercial use on this residential lot. And they wanted to know, they wanted a specific area with dimensions, even though it's not a new lot, that they could tie their decision to if they decided to approve that change. So that's why that dotted line is in there. And you'll note that it includes just enough area so that it's a little bit outside the, the fence. And it, it doesn't include the trees, because the trees are enhancements to the abutting property. Well, not a abutting property, but the same property, but it's not the commercial use area. So it doesn't include those trees. So, let's see.
May I, may I have a question?
And then, you know, I'm sorry, I'll stop.
A question related to that?
Yes.
The maintenance, obviously, of the, of the tree, this sort of landscape buffer, would still be responsibility of the commercial use, right? So in other words, the residential tenant's not going to be responsible for maintaining that, right?
No, and the owner is the same owner for both properties.
Right.
So the, if a permit, if a site plan approval were issued, and there were a condition about location, type, size, and so forth of trees, there should also be language about that the trees would be maintained in good condition or replaced, and that the responsibility is, is the, is with the applicant, which is Falcone Properties. So I'm not sure, it's possible to make that distinction exactly, because Falcone Properties rents or leases the commercial property. But if, if the Planning Board had an issue with the maintenance of the trees or replacing them, they would go back to the owner, and the owner would have to make those repairs or replacements.
Yeah, it was just really more about how the Board of Appeal would view it then, if that responsibility falls outside of that commercial line.
Yeah, but we own the house, Joe.
It would, it would be, yeah, because they own the whole property.
Yeah.
In some cases, I suppose, I don't know if this would happen that often, but sometimes when you have a proposal, you might have an applicant offer to plant trees on neighboring property.
Correct, right.
And there, you'd probably have an agreement as to who was going to maintain them after that. But this isn't that situation, because he has.
And these are rental, not condos, because if it was a condominium situation, it would be different.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, I think the, the decision could just, I think we would, we would put in the decision about the maintenance of the trees and the replacement of any trees. So we could just, you know, make it clear that that's part of, you know, the commercial use responsibility.
Yeah, it also makes it clear to a neighbor who might have some complaint or dissatisfaction.
That they wouldn't go to the Rosinette.
Exactly. So it's important to have the language.
To note that.
I did want to add a little more information about the landscaping, because we had a question that came today, and about the exact placement of the trees, particularly the arborvitae's around the fence. And this is the information from the landscape designer that Falcone Properties uses. The green giant arborvitae, which is supposed to be 10 to 12 feet high when they're planted, are, I'm not sure what all this means, but are approximately four feet on center and six feet off the fence. And a straight row, not, and, and they are going to be in a straight row, not staggered. And then there'll be a six-to-eight-foot mulch bed, you know, continuously along the line of arborvitae. So that's the plan. For the red maple, they will be approximately 20 to 25 feet apart. They'll be staggered in placement. Some of their placement, though, will depend on ledge and boulders that's, that's on the property. So it, that's why you want to be pretty precise with a plan like this, but you don't want to necessarily say, you can't move it a few inches, because we don't yet know in those areas how deep the soil available is, and we want the trees to, to grow well. So that's the, I think, let's see what else. If necessary, the arborvitae are very big. These are huge trees, and they do provide a very thick screen. They may be so big that, I think we have 18 on this plan, although I, there's a table on here that tells you how many. Yeah, we have 18. If, if it's too crowded, it might be less than that. So it would be 18, or as many as, as arborvitae are required, to be a continuous screen. And they're going to be pretty big when they're planted. It's just, you do have to allow for the trees to grow, too.
What do you think of four feet on center?
So that was my question. I think four feet on center is relatively close to each other, and I think in the long run, that you might be.
For those big trees.
The detriment, they're fast growers.
They're going to grow high.
Yeah, and wide at the base. They're wider than your Emerald Greens. So that's why I'd asked if, usually you might plant it on the center, the, the center of your panel, of your fence, because each panel of your fence is eight feet.
Yeah.
So either do it on the center, or one on each post, but, so that would probably make them eight feet apart.
So post, center, post, center.
No, no, post, 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 or center, center, center.
More than that four foot on center, because that's really tight.
Yep.
These are probably going to be four, you know. Yeah, the ball's probably going to be four feet.
Wide.
Wide.
And the spread.
Four feet high, aren't they?
Ultimately, the spread, you know, is eight to 10, you know, eight feet wide. So that means four feet on each side.
So how would you, so what language would I use to describe that?
I would just say plant them on each post, or, or on each panel, and that might come down to your ledge situation.
Yep.
Or like a six foot on center?
Approximately. Six to eight feet on center or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then with the, the maples, it's always nice to, since we're providing, you're providing the maples for the neighbors.
Yes.
To sort of take into consideration their second-floor windows. So if there's a bedroom, you know, make it sure the center of the tree would give the greatest coverage for the second floor, so.
Five-foot planting area to mulch bed for each tree.
Yeah.
Okay, so the maple, the location for the maples will take into consideration the location of neighbors' bedroom windows particularly, because the property is particularly important.
With the lights and the cars.
Yeah, that's additional. So I did also summarize in this, in this, what the previous changes to the plan had been. Do you want me to just quickly run through those? Or are you?
Thank you for doing your memos, Marion.
I know, I know. I was going to compliment you, too, on the detail of this, so this is very good.
I'm glad you asked me to do it, that's all I can say, because sometimes it can be very confusing at the end trying to put it all together. But just quickly, just to show what we've changed since we began this discussion. We extended the fence around the parking area at 672 Randolph Avenue. Or the fence at 672 Randolph Avenue has been extended around the lower corner. We talked about, whoops, this is the wrong list. Back to the beginning. Detailed stormwater drainage structures and locations are shown on the plan. I'd also point out that we now have a letter from the DPW director saying that they have reviewed the stormwater plan and don't recommend any changes, and that there will be significantly more stormwater retained and absorbed because of this, because of the structures that have to be put in place for this plan than is happening right now. So, and I gave you all copies of that letter, and I think you got them, too, from the planning director. We do now identify all abutting landowners on this plan. We revised the landscaping, which was originally just arborvitae, to include a mix of arborvitae and red maples. And there was, I think originally, there was no fence on the plan. We were just going to have landscaping, which is what we talk about in our, some of our bylaws for parking lots. But the neighbor, one of the neighbors wanted a wood fence similar to the one that exists now. And so this new fence will be just like the one that's in the old lot. It will be six feet high, though, with two feet of lattice on top of that. So it's actually going to be higher, I think.
That'll be nice.
The additional parking area lighting now, instead of being light poles, which was in the original proposal, it's going to be just like the lighting behind vents. It's going to be inside the fence. And these are residential-style fixtures, and we're going to be using the same fixtures, or just like, you know, similar. I poured through my old application materials to look for the specs for those lights. I didn't find them. They will be in the file. If anybody is concerned that the same lighting isn't being used, we'll be able to make a comparison. I just wasn't able to pull that specification out for you. But they look like lanterns, you know, residential lanterns.
Quinzel lighting, antique, black, I think, antique style, yeah.
So the major change was, we went through several iterations of moving the parking lot around. And the key issue was, how close does it have to be to those, the neighbors, those two neighbors, Randolph Ave neighbors? The closest point is a corner of the two lots. It's now 30.9 feet. It was, it was closer by, I think it might have been 10 feet in the original plan. And there were other reasons why we thought it might be better to do it that way, but the neighbors really wanted it moved away. And then one of the planning board members, I think it was Sean, but I'm not sure, Sean Fahy, said, "Well, why not just turn the whole parking area and put it next to the existing parking area?" We were able to do that. And finally, we did make it some, we made it a little bit smaller. So there are 15 spaces now that will be new. And because we're taking spaces away in the old parking lot, the net is, of new spaces, is 10 spaces. And I will point out, too, that I did give the planning board a memo in November, I think it was in November, reviewing the parking requirements if this were a development in a, in a commercial district. So what would be the requirements for the uses that are in this building? And the reason for that memo was to try to demonstrate that while we're adding 10 spaces, we're not adding more than are needed or might be required, because, you know, we don't want to overpark, we don't want to encourage more cars than necessary. It's a congested area. And, and I believe that the memo, I hope, does a good job justifying that 10 net new spaces is not overparking. But it will improve the parking at this site. And in particular, for the residential tenants who have to compete during the day, even though they're supposed to have their own spaces, they compete with commercial visitors. It will be a lot easier for them, and they should be able to keep their, their residential spaces clear. The management should be able to much better than they can now. So that's pretty much it. It's not, other than those small changes that we made for this meeting, I think the point that we've reached, at least as the applicant, is that we've made the changes that we can to be responsive to concerns that neighbors had. We hope the planning board thinks this is a well-thought-out plan. We do understand that the Board of Appeals has the decisive vote here, because it's a variance requirement that they have to vote on, and that's a pretty difficult bar. They want to be assured that they can consider the legal aspects of the variance without being concerned that it, that the layout isn't well-planned. And they're really looking to the planning board for input on that. So appreciate all of your.
Great, thank you again for your details. And I wanted to give just Tim an opportunity to comment if you would like, Tim. And I'm sorry, I skipped over your updates, and we'll come back to those. But I was wondering if you had any comments on this plan?
No, I think that the applicant's been responsive to the board's input. I think the board's input has been good and has improved the plan. I think, you know, I chatted briefly with Maggie earlier in the day about the plantings. So as long as we, you know, get that right, I think that'll be good. But I think this has been our responsive set of changes to the board's input.
Great, thank you, Tim. And is there anyone on Zoom or in the public who wanted to comment while the public hearing is still open? Nope. Any comments from the board? Questions? Other than the items that we've addressed?
I have no more questions or concerns. I thank you for addressing them all.
Thank you.
And for your thoroughness, Marion, as usual.
Thank you.
So I'm all set.
Same thing. I think the process has been, you know, a nice process. Thanks for having us out there, and thanks for the neighbors for coming in. And I think everyone's been really respectful, and everyone's concerns were taken into account. So thank you for making the changes.
I agree, I think you guys have been great. I love the project. I appreciate being a former owner of the place, the need for parking and getting people off of Pleasant Street is huge. And I think it's just a very responsible thing to do. So thank you for spending your money, taking your time and doing it.
And thanks for preserving, yeah, the historic building. It's a beautiful building. I do hope all of our newer constructions will take a look at your building. And, you know, it's just a great asset to the, it's always been a great asset, but you've made it better.
Hundred percent.
And we can get you a plaque to the other historic houses.
Yeah, there we go, yeah.
The Historic Commission can help you with that, so, yeah. That would look really nice, too. So, yeah, we can talk.
So are you ready to motion that?
Yes, first we should close the public hearing.
Right, yes.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on 79 Pleasant Street?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 79 Pleasant Street?
Application modification.
Second.
Second, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And now I would entertain a motion to accept the site plan modification application for 79 Pleasant Street as presented, and subject, should we say, subject to the items, the repair and the maintenance of trees. We want to include that language in there. Six to eight-inch spread for tree, yes.
So I think we could include that in the decision.
We can include that in, okay, great. So I just want to make sure we're clear on those.
I think what we could do is ask Marion to draft, a draft decision, since she's done that. You've done that before, right?
I have done it, yes.
Because I saw you take great notes on what we've said.
She's very good at notes.
And so that we would still, it would be pending review of the language of the final decision.
Perfect.
But with that change, Meredith, I would make that motion to support the amendment to the site plan approval. Actually, it's the site plan modification to 79 Pleasant Street, subject to final review of the decision.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Did you decide that you're meeting on the 22nd or not?
Yes, we are.
So if I'm able to draft it and get it back.
Yeah, because we have.
Is it possible that you might be able to approve it then? I'm just looking to my next, to the next Board of Appeals hearing. I guess it's up to me to get a draft done, so I'll do my best.
Yeah, we have a pretty full agenda that night, but we'll, you know, try to.
Just bring in a site walk on Saturday.
Well, that would be real fast.
I think you could confirm the vote, though, Meredith, right? For the Board of Appeal.
We can, and I've done that. And I'm not, I'm not trying to speed anything up. We're not under a tight time constraint. But the planning, the Board of Appeals wanted to have a clear idea what their next steps would be. So I know, you know, if, they won't actually take, I don't know what they're going to do, but if they took a vote approving the variance, they won't do that until there's actually a written decision by the planning board with signatures. That's fine, if it's not ready and we haven't done it by the 28th, then they'll, they'll know that you took a vote to approve the site plan, and that they will just set another hearing date. It was, it might save them, they might be able to conclude things on the 28th for their sake. I think it's nice to try to do that. But we'll just, we'll see what we can do, and I don't, you have many other things to do, I realize, so.
Yes, but we can, that's something that would be very quick and, you know, simple for us to just review that.
Particularly if you have it in advance, as you normally have provided.
Yeah, if you can send something out, right.
I might not do it by Saturday, but I will do it quickly.
Well, it's Friday.
I was going to say, we could have made our motion to authorize Tim to sign, subject to those, subject to those.
I guess he could do that.
Yeah, when we approve the actual language of the decision, I think we can, we could put that in as well.
So, great, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's great, thank you very much.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. It was a good, nice collaboration, so, yeah. Great, okay, so now we can move on. And you know what, Tim? My apologies, because I had skipped over your update from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Is there anything else that you would like to add before we move on and to move up? And we're going to move up, Josh, do MA, the East Milton update next, so.
Yeah, I actually, I don't, I don't see Josh in the, is he in the room? Because I think he might have mentioned that he was going to be participating remotely. I don't see him in the Zoom, so we can maybe kill a little bit of time here.
Okay.
Not a ton. Josh has a couple of things he wanted to mention. But one thing I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows we're making progress on is the open space plan. I have been doing quite a bit of kind of behind-the-scenes work with our consultant at Park Forest Lee Whitten. Some of the murkier ownership situations relative to whether parcels are Concom or parks or town-owned. This has been something that I think a lot of folks in town have been kind of wanting to do for quite some time and wanting to figure out. So I've been kind of neck-deep, virtually speaking, at the Registry of Deeds, trying to track some things down, so that the inventory that we have in the open space plan will be as accurate and up-to-date as possible. And, you know, as folks remember from, from last annual town meeting, there's been a number of parcels that are, you know, going to be changing hands between parks and Concom and the town. So we've been working on that. One of the reasons why that's important is because an element of the open space plan is a Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation of certain public facilities in town, including open space resources. And so we wanted to make sure we knew, you know, who owned what and who had jurisdiction over what, so that our consultants could continue with their site visits and doing that self-evaluation. That'll be really good to have, you know, just for kind of general public policy purposes, and obviously to sort of move on with the plan. We're hoping to have that plan done by summertime. And I don't have a date now, but relatively soon, we're going to have a date for a second public forum on that planning effort. So stay tuned for that, but I'm working really hard on that. It'll be a nice feather in the town's cap, you know, when that gets done. And hopefully, we can sort of use that as a springboard for other open space and conservation planning efforts. And then Josh had a couple of things he wanted to talk about relative to some of the sustainability and climate change efforts that he spearheaded.
Thanks, Tim. And I think it's a good transition with event dates, because we have two upcoming events that we wanted to share about. Just this morning, we got a request from the Community Involvement Coordinator, Zenetta Purnell, who is running the Lower Napanza Superfund Sites Community Engagement Efforts to help share the word for their upcoming hybrid virtual and in-person public forum. That will be held on February 27th at 6:30 in the Hyde Park Community Center. Julie and I were out today posting flyers across town and in sort of areas along the river. So if you're going to the library or coffee break, take a minute and look for those flyers, and encourage everyone to join. The topic will be specifically focused on a mechanism called a community advisory group, or a CAG, which is effectively like a sort of subcommittee of residents and stakeholders who can directly participate in the design and outreach process for a superfund site. It's a really influential group. It was a sort of mechanism that we pushed for in the town's response to the draft Community Involvement Plan when that was being drafted months ago. And we're really excited to see them taking it in their stride and really encouraging community participation in that CAG. I was also asked if there are any translation or accessibility issues that anyone listening may need in their participation to contact Zenetta at r1napanzat@epa.gov, or on epa.gov/napanzatriver, which is the sort of landing page for all things superfund cleanup, to contact her by February 16th, so they have enough time to organize those accessibility needs. We have another event that is in a similar but very different vein is our final public forum for our microgrid feasibility assessment. We've been working on that for about a year now, since last April, with our consultants Clean Energy Solutions to identify the opportunities at Town Hall, Milton Police Department, and at Winter Valley for a local community microgrid system, which has onsite solar generation and battery storage to help offset peak demand at high-cost times, as well as provide resilience in case of power outages. That final report has been drafted and will be shared at this meeting, which will be on February 20th, Tuesday prior to that EPA meeting, in the Key's Room of the Public Library at 6:30. We'll be taking feedback on the draft plan and then presenting a final plan that comes out with those community comments. And we're really looking forward to a robust conversation, as we've had in our last two public forums. And we'll also be providing food if that is what it is, anybody. So just want to give those two updates. Thanks, Tim.
Great, Josh, thank you.
What was it, Town Hall, Winter Valley, and what else? What were the three?
Norton PG.
Police Station, thank you.
Terrific, thank you, Josh, great work.
And it looks like Josh Fialla from MAPC is in the attendees. If we could bring him up.
Perfect timing.
Josh in the house.
Welcome, Josh.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, Josh.
Thank you. I will go ahead and share my screen and share the presentation, which hopefully I believe the board received last week as well. So there is a lot of content in this presentation, so I'll try to go through it briefly at a high level. so I'll try to go through it briefly at a high level and focus on the zoning concepts. So I'll introduce myself first, just so anyone else who hasn't met me before, Josh Fialla from Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Great to be with the Planning Board again this evening, talking about East Milton Square, this zoning there. Any questions from the board or guidance before I get started on this?
No, I would say, go ahead and let's
I just was thinking, I was letting some people know about this tonight. And I said MAPC and someone had asked me what they are. So Josh, maybe you could just say, what is the MAPC? And how, maybe explain how Milton has a representative in Tabor Keely. And just, just a quick little background for, for the public.
Certainly, yeah. So MAPC is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We are the regional planning agency for the Greater Boston area, which includes Milton. We provide technical planning assistance to towns such as Milton, doing supporting efforts around land use, transportation, public health, community development, and a variety of other topics as well. We have about a little over 100 planning staff in the agency. And we help communities throughout the 101 cities and towns, roughly within the 495 belt of the Greater Boston area. And we do work such as this, you know, district zoning work, such as occurring in East Milton Square. We also do townwide master plans. There's a, as you referenced in your question, Cheryl, there's an advisory board with representatives from each of the municipalities that meet, I think, twice a year and get together and talk about issues in the region and governance of the agency. So that's what we, who we are and what we do. And we are funded through a variety of sources as well. And this, in this case, the funding for the project is coming through the town from a grant that the town has received.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So I know you're like a governmental agency. So I'm just wondering sometimes, is your first priority to the town? Because all, every town is different. You know, as we've gone through this MBTA zoning, we've noticed, you know, that it's, every town is so different and unique geographically and what's literally built. So my question is, you know, when you work or represent us, do you come to our meetings fully being like pro Milton? Or do you come, you know, with a little bit of, I don't want to say bias, because as you said, you're working, you know, with other, you know, governmental agencies. You get funded through grants. So when, can we count on you to be like pro Milton 100% of the time?
Yes, yeah, we, so we, in the capacity, serving as a consultant to cities and towns and these types of funding processes, we do serve the interests of the town. We try to select projects to work with, which we believe is, are aligned with our mission. So there's a little bit of sort of pre-screening that occurs there. Our mission is about regional collaboration, smart growth, and equity. And so we see a project such as this as aligned with that mission. And then when we get selected to work with the town and work with the town in this capacity, we are really trying to answer to the process, which we are leading and facilitating. So in this case, learning from your priorities as the Planning Board, learning from previous plans and the town's master plan and previous planning in this district. And then also learning from the community and stakeholders that have been involved in this process directly.
And what happens when Milton's mission is at odds with MAPC mission?
When you're at odds with MAPC mission? I don't think generally that municipalities are at odds with what MAPC is trying to help municipalities with. I think maybe on a project-by-project basis, there might be some disconnections that occur in which case we likely would choose not to provide technical assistance in those situations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. And I will say that the reason why we selected MAPC as our consultant is because we loved the robust community involvement, that you really did a lot of listening and a lot of community forums to really hear from the residents. And we'll hear about more tonight of that work that you've already been doing, so. With that, thank you.
Great, yes, and I'll, I'll go ahead and get into it. Thank you for those clarifying questions. And there, as I mentioned, there are quite a few slides, so I'm going to skip through a couple as we go, just to make sure that I don't hold up your meeting too long. But do have, as you've just pointed to, a summary of the community feedback that we've been engaging with in this process through a variety of means, and I'll describe what that process has been so far. And then really want to focus with the board on outlining an initial zoning concept and approach based upon the community feedback and direction, and get your feedback so that we can continue to develop that concept and approach. And then hear from you along the way with any questions or discussion, and then leave some space. And then we'll briefly touch on next steps and talk about a, another community forum that we'd like to get into the schedule to continue the feedback. So again, this is a Planning Board study for people who maybe are just seeing it for the first time this evening. And the Planning Board is focused on East Milton Square in this case, which you all know the geography of the town very well, but there it is highlighted. And here is the general area that we're looking at along the, the Adams Street corridor primarily and intersecting with I-93 and its deck over the highway there. And there you see at the center, the newly revitalized Manning Community Park and some of the surrounding building, existing buildings and structures in this illustration. And this is really an effort that builds upon past planning in the district to really take that, the recommendations and vision, which have been previously described and illustrated, and define zoning and design regulations that hopefully can proceed to town meeting for adoption. And all of this is really to try to get to a position where the zoning regulations more proactively guide future investments. And there's some reasons why the current zoning isn't doing that, and we'll touch on that as well tonight. So just a little bit, since there's a lot of information, this is kind of the overall structure. Just talking briefly about what we have done to date, what we've heard, which is pretty extensive and detailed, and then how we're responding to that feedback directly, which I think there's, the high, high level sort of headline is that the community has given us pretty clear direction in a number of areas relative to the zoning. And we think it also provides an opportunity to improve on the current zoning while respecting what the community has expressed so far. So I think there's a good, a good path forward. So summary of the feedback, we've been holding individual stakeholder interviews over the fall, last fall. We had a community meeting in November, a community survey, which was held open from that community meeting through the first of this year. And also visited the Chamber of Commerce and were a guest speaker at their December meeting as well. So have been trying to get, get around to the various stakeholders and make, make ourselves available and discuss with whoever would like to talk to us about East Milton Square and gather that feedback. So I'll share a little bit about who participated in the process so far and then the feedback we've received around vision for the square, challenges, opportunities, direct feedback on zoning changes, and then some of the potential examples that we mentioned and some direction on those. Mostly, we're engaging with residents, so that's the primary stakeholder that has been involved. We've also had a few property owners, business owners, and those who work in the district as well, as well as just a few patrons of the district. Most people live in East Milton Square. That's where they self-identify as being from or surrounding neighborhoods with representation from the town at large as well. And one who identified as from a surrounding town, perhaps a property owner. Age was relatively well distributed, though the under 24 age demographic is underrepresented. And that might be something we want to think about if, if that's of interest to the board, to enrich that engagement and maybe do some direct outreach somehow, we can think about what that might mean. But otherwise, we do see that pie chart is sort of comparable to what you see in the town at large. So the 40 to 59 is the, one of the larger pieces of that pie, both in the townwide demographics and what we've seen so far in the, the engagement in this process. Most people are very familiar with East Milton Square visiting daily, if not. And then those who aren't visiting daily are visiting at least every week. Pretty consistent priorities and issues and challenges and concerns for the future. Traffic and congestion is rising to the top of any of these types of questions. Pedestrian safety and walkability is also a major concern, as well as parking and continuing to attract and retain businesses in the district as well and have a variety of options for the types of businesses that are there. And people feel Milton Square is, is pretty close today to what they'd like it to be, so not looking for a really dramatic change. And people say it's, if we ask this question, how close is East Milton Square to your ideal vision? The largest group here, 29 respondents, said close. So not, not exactly what they want it to be, but not far off from it either. And then asking about general support for private or public investment in East Milton Square. There is support there. Strongest was support, with 30 respondents, followed by strongly supported 23. And then just general gauging of interest and support for zoning updates in East Milton Square. And that also showed pretty strong support. So over half either strongly supported or supported general zoning changes and updates. And then again, if we ask a little bit different way, but similar results, what is your biggest concern with updating the zoning? Traffic and congestion again show up as the, the number one answer, followed by parking and overdevelopment or too much density. So those are our messages we're trying to keep track of and see how we can accommodate them in the zoning requirements and review requirements. And then we had a variety of purpose statements that we tested with the audience in the survey and at the public meeting. And each of the purpose statements that we included were actually favorably received. So all of the above was the most frequent answer in response. And if you singled out one of those zoning purpose statements, strengthen walkability and safe convenient travel for all is the number one vote answer alone. But I think as a collection, they, I think we can proceed with this collection with some refinement as we continue. In terms of zoning changes, the boundary itself, we, in the Barrett Report, it was contemplated to expand some, the existing business district. We heard pretty strongly that the community is not seeking that or would be, you know, have a lot of concerns about it in terms of changes to individual properties or encroachment of the business district in other locations. So I, I think it's, it's probably a reasonable move to continue with the current boundary of the district. And we can talk more about that, but just, it seemed that that's a way to respond to the community feedback and not create issues in terms of future support. And I think there's plenty of improvement we can do within the current boundaries.
Great.
In terms of use
I just said, great, yeah, great, thank you, that's good.
Okay. In terms of uses, narrowing the uses a little bit was the preferred approach. So we're thinking about ways that we can do that. And that, that points potentially to the type of zoning changes that we're talking about too, which I'll get to a little bit later. And a focus on non-residential uses on the ground floor, which is where we've been headed, thinking about mixed use in the district. And we also have an interest in introducing some language, as you did in Milton Village, around the form of buildings, design guidelines. And that's something that we are having as a focus in our process, but that shows up as well supported in the community, so that's great. In terms of setbacks, and in a very strong interest in defining a range for the front, which was the focus about where a building should land, should land in the front, setback between zero and 10 feet-ish, give, give or take. And really focusing on this as a town center or downtown type of feel, where you see the buildings close to the, the front of the sidewalk in reinforcing that. Thinking about potentially retaining the open space that's required today, but having some incentives to increase it and give some pocket parks or other outdoor areas to the district as well. And then height is a major concern that we've touched on with many of the stakeholder conversations and heard loud and clear as well, that there is potential for increasing the height in some specific locations. There's also an interest in retaining the same allowed building height. And this is, I think, more relative to people expressing the height as it is there today, not in the current zoning, as the current zoning does go up to five stories by special permit. But we'll get into some discussion around height and how this, how we can respond to this feedback, I think, productively. And then thinking about building density as well, that was a concern. And the, the notion of trying to keep density within reason, but allowing it potentially to increase in some specific locations where it makes sense. And in terms of parking, it was interesting, most, most, I think, favored retaining the current parking requirements, which I do think will potentially be a challenge. And we can, we'll, as the process continues, we'll work through sort of some of the technical aspects and study around parking and what it might mean for redevelopment potential. But the, there is some interest here, as you see, the second vote getter was getting the notion of removing minimum parking requirements and adding a parking maximum, which is, is pretty progressive on the scale of parking changes. But it is interesting that that showed up as, as getting favorable votes here. I don't think we should necessarily go that far. I'm not sure that the support is there for it in the community. But I, I do think that we're going to have to increase the flexibility somewhat on parking requirements to make this more of a, a town center and mixed-use downtown environment, as opposed to a more suburban and sort of parking-first type of place. The options on affordability, retaining the current affordable housing requirements, and then potentially creating an incentive to increase the affordability provided are both well-favored here. And doing the same for sustainability requirements as well, setting up some incentives to encourage increased environmentally friendly construction and development practices. And then similarly to the goals that we proposed in the purpose statement, the interest in variation in content for the design guidelines is all of the above, really, that there, there should be pretty comprehensive design guidance, which we can work up as the process continues. But this is, I think, a good thing to continue to provide guidance across the board, which is similar to the approach that was taken in Milton Village as well. And with a combination of both suggested design guidelines, but then also required design standards and thinking about the, what's the most important priorities to require and make mandatory in that menu of options. Interesting that this came, this feedback in terms of the type of approval required. Site plan review was favored, and it currently is by special permit in large regard. And so this would be, I think, an improvement over the current zoning if there is a sort of base level that could be achieved through site plan review. That would improve the expedience and reliability of approvals processes. And that shows up again in this next question, where we're thinking about an approach with these incentives and thinking about a sort of base level approval, where everything is in scale or alignment with maybe the community's desires. And that can be achieved through a site plan review, a little more simple process. And then where some of those incentive-based approaches are involved, or maybe it's a little higher scale, those would be special permit approvals, where the community would, and the Planning Board would retain a little more control over the outcomes. So some of the examples that we mentioned So some of the examples that we mentioned, Cushing Square in Belmont was not as favorably received, I would say. Dedham Square, Dedham was a little more favorably received. Downtown Reading, mixed reviews in downtown Reading. Canton Center, downtown Canton was more favorably received as well. And then your very own Milton Village was more favorably received. And we had a few write-in votes, which were actually competitive with the suggested examples. And those included Hingham, and Needham, Wellesley, and Newton, and the Newton Villages. So if we look at all of that together, and this is for us to take a look at the current zoning in these places, which do have, have each successfully attracted mixed-use development over the preceding years and decades. So we'll be mining these examples for some of their zoning approaches to see what they have done and maybe model some of that. If we look at these, we'll, I think, narrow in on four of them based upon the community's feedback. And that would be Hingham, which was one of the write-in votes. So we can look at Hingham Center and see what's going on there. I have done some work there and quite familiar with it. So that's a good one to look at. Dedham Square as well, we'll continue to take a look at. Needham, we'll take a look at as well. And that was also suggested through the write-in responses. And then Canton Center. So we'll, we'll take a look at these for patterns in what we're seeing in their recommended heights, recommended approval processes, the type of design guidelines or standards that they're employing. And then also things like parking requirements as well, just to get a survey across places that have been responded to favorably. So there were a lot of other questions and comments. And I think they were, you know, a range of considerations and concerns. Not as many showed up as resonating patterns or themes across multiple respondents. I would say traffic studies, shared parking, those were the ones that did have a few multiple hits in terms of the comments. But you can take a look at these and see the variety and range that we've had. So I threw that pretty quickly. So maybe I'll just pause to see if there were any questions about any of that feedback.
I'm sorry. Yes, I was going to ask you. You mentioned at the outset that you had stakeholder interviews and you had the chamber meeting. What you just reviewed was purely from the survey, right? So how do you factor in what you learned and the feedback that you got from those other two processes?
Yeah, I think that the data from those interviews and from the conversations is less quantitative in nature and more qualitative in that it wasn't as if, I was asking similar questions in each of the conversations, but wasn't actually inviting voting in the same way we did at the meeting or the survey. But I would say overall that the themes which I just shared from the two more quantitative data gatherings, occasions, the qualitative conversations were very similar and pointed to some of the same top concerns, traffic, parking, congestion, building height, building density, and potential concerns around both attracting future investment, but also balancing against overdevelopment. And so those, I think that's heartening that the conversations that we heard in those other types of sessions resonate with and are compatible and complementary to what I've just outlined.
I just think it would be helpful if you could document that in some fashion too for the record because you mentioned at the beginning, but then we don't get any place in the slide deck. What feedback or what you learned from those?
Yep, that's fair. I can compile the notes from this.
Okay, thanks.
Great. So now we'll just move into outlining the initial zoning approach based upon this feedback. And that includes discussing the zoning purpose and boundary, the uses and approval approach, dimensional characteristics, and then thinking a little bit about parking benefits and impacts. And touching on design guidelines, but design guidelines will be developed as we continue over the next few months. So these are all from the list. I think they all still retain relevance in terms of sort of a purpose statement for the zoning and trying to be consistent in terms of the zoning we're defining the details of to match these initial draft purposes. And I think we can continue to think about ways to strengthen and refine these. But I think for now, these are a good start. And so really, we're about creating a walkable district over time with each investment and each improvement, intentionally guiding the commercial district investment, enhancing the sense of place and district identity, leveraging those private investments to add community amenities while also trying to reduce the impacts that would occur. And then also incentivizing mixed-use redevelopment and to bring along with that a variety of housing types and housing options. And then improving environmental sustainability and resilience in the area. So all those, I think, the zoning is looking to achieve and are good to express as direct purpose statements as well. In terms of the zoning boundary, as I mentioned, the feedback was pretty clear. The red outline is, or the dashed red outline is the boundary of, as it was expressed in the Barrett Report. And it did show a modest expansion to some of the, in most cases, non-residential properties today. But there was a lot of sensitivity around that, I feel, in the, both in the public forum and in the survey responses. And I'm not, I'm not sure the value of that expansion is worth the pushback or lack of support for it. And I feel like it could be enough negativity that it could diminish the good work of other changes, which are, I think, more valuable and hopefully more well, better supported.
So one thing, Josh, I just would like us or you to consider some additional outreach on this topic because these are longstanding business uses with underlying residential zoning that doesn't make a lot of sense. So they have to go to the Board of Appeals for special permits or other kinds of approvals. And they're all different. So they don't follow the same kind of approval processes. So for example, if the office building that's sort of just to the bottom of the word where Granite Avenue is, that's, you know, sort of an island around, it's an island and was surrounded by fast-moving or very often moving cars. So for that to be a residential zone, doesn't, and it's got a commercial building on it, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I would like to understand what kind of permits do each of these businesses operate under in this residential zone? Because, you know, some of them come to Planning Board for some changes, like site plan approval. And yet they go to the Board of Appeal for other changes like parking, you know. So it just seems we should clean up the zoning here. And I think when people say expand the zone, they're worried that they're going into, you know, residential areas. And I don't know that that was explained well enough at that public forum. And we're making a decision based on something what might not be fully understood. And it's, I just feel it's worth more effort.
And I think to Cheryl's point, I think, you know, expanding over to like the Rockland Trust Building.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, oh yeah. So that is, I think that should definitely be in it. But I would be more concerned expanding Mechanics Street.
So I think we should talk about each one of these, like go through it. Like you've said on other initiatives, because where these businesses have been here for a long time. For example, the building that the Connollys bought and they, you know, tore down and they built that mixed-use building, that was one of these convoluted processes again. Even though it had been an office, you know, medical office building for decades before it, if we make it clear that where we already have that business use, a mixed use is acceptable there, it just makes it cleaner moving forward instead of having that become something a subject of negotiation in the future, where we're trying to get rid of that site-by-site negotiation. So I agree that some of them may not make sense in this boundary, but a lot of them do because of that being businesses already.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that sounds like reasonable pushback. So I think that what is probably in order is a more detailed parcel-by-parcel analysis of the sort of parcels which fall within the dotted red boundary on this diagram and not within the blue boundary, just to assess their current use. If we can, maybe try to understand their sort of current permit sort of.
Yeah, I think, Josh, you could ask the building department for that. They should hopefully have it. I know that when this master plan was done, so the former director, he kind of rattled them off at times, you know, this exists under that and this exists under that. And it was, it was one of the reasons long ago that this idea of expanding the district was brought forth. It was because of that hodgepodge of permits that exist and the difficulty in sort of executing a vision. So if we put a boundary there and then the building across the street has to go through a convoluted and difficult negotiation between the Board of Appeal and the Planning Board and the neighbors, instead of having it set out in this whole process. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because of the two projects that did go through years of back and forth. We're trying to not have that happen for every parcel that is in this area. We're not talking single-family homes for the most part, right? There might be one or two that are in there. But what we're talking about are things that have had business uses for a very long time, but the zoning is residential.
Yeah, I think, I think there's.
It might be a little different there.
I think there's.
I'm more focused on the others.
Yeah, I agree. I think there's a path forward there for parcels which are non-residential today, for sure. I think that the feedback is probably pretty clear that we should probably steer clear of residential properties in expanding the business district onto those residential properties. That was more what I think the sensitivity was.
Correct. I think that's right. So that might be Mechanics Street. I don't know all those parcels there. But, and I'm not sure all the parcels that are there by the Fruit Center. But definitely the ones on the other side are not residential and the Fruit Center also. So those at a minimum. And then I think we just need to look at the site-by-site of the rest.
Yeah, I'll revisit this and we'll do a more parcel-by-parcel analysis and.
I think we have to be careful with that.
And I will say that the difference in the boundary that you see sort of on the tail along Granite Avenue is really the difference between whether the full parcel is included or just an offset from Granite Avenue. And in those circumstances, I think it probably is beneficial to adjust the boundary, even though it's not a material change in terms of the regulation of a parcel. I think split parcels with multiple districts, although there is an explanation of that situation in the zoning bylaw, I, it's much cleaner to just have a full parcel and a full district.
I agree. Again, those other two parcels have the same situation. Some business, some residential. And it just makes it more difficult.
All right, well, that's, thank you for that direction. That's very good. And this is why we have these discussions. That's good. In terms of uses, the desire to, the desire that was most supported was to narrow to the desired uses only. And I think there's a lot in the current uses which is desired and that you see there under the bullet allow. There are, there is a need to add mixed use as an allowed use, of course, which is, I think, the primary objective here. And that would be for potentially a partial non-residential ground floor with residential upper floors, the type of traditional mixed use that we all might imagine if we, when we hear that phrase. There are some uses which exist today as allowed. And we, I would recommend we want to remove them because they're not consistent with this vision that is expressed in those purpose statements we just went through. So sales rooms and repair shops for motor vehicles, garages, filling stations, storage warehouses, undertakers are the specific examples of those uses, which, there are some in the district today, but you would, I don't think that the vision would support seeing more of those uses in the future.
We have three filling stations already?
Yeah, I would agree, yeah.
So this is consistent with what we did in Milton Village?
Yep.
But do you also need to add the multifamily as an allowed use? Is in combination with the mixed use? Because it, right now, the only residential that's allowed is single family?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to allow multifamily as its own separate use.
I don't know. Right, we want to have, but there's no definition of what it is, right? So you say residential up above, but yet does that mean multi-unit residential up above?
Mixed use, yeah.
Yeah, the mixed use, but I'm just trying to clarify that the mixed use allows for multifamily above the first floor and not, and I'm not, maybe it's not a distinction that's not necessary, but I just wanted to make sure that it's clear.
I think, I can review how some of the other example zoning areas have done that and look at Milton Village's language as well. But I would lean toward defining that in the definition of mixed use and not, not creating confusion that multifamily alone would be allowed.
Okay.
So we're talking about mixed use as an option or a mandate?
A mandate.
A mandate. There you have to have first floor commercial.
Every, all the first floor has to be a mandate.
Right.
So the question that we'll get to when he gets to this is whether this is an overlay over the existing business, which means you could still do all business.
Yeah, so that was my question.
So that's still to come in.
I wouldn't be able to mandate all the mixed use.
Right. I agree that when we get to it, I think the overlay is the right way so that we can still allow for all business, because we don't have a lot of that.
No, and a lot of people, you know, need smaller working spaces. They want to, you know, work locally. Their home isn't cutting it. You know, they need, you know, we have a lot of professionals in town who need a little bit more space. So, I mean, in my ideal world, it'd be great having retail on the first floor and then office space on the second floor. You know, so then we get the, and then we get a higher commercial tax.
Yes.
No parking requirement for this?
No, we're not there yet. Yeah, there should be some parking.
Yeah.
And I think we have to watch what we remove because we have three filling stations right now, but we probably have five beauty salons. I mean, are they going to limit that also?
No, I don't think you can do that. Like as a property owner, I don't think you can.
Repair shops, motor vehicles, garages, filling stations, storage warehouses, undertakers.
Yeah, that's.
We can't lose that out, but we're going to leave the.
Because those are not, yeah. It's a good.
Oh, right.
Because I would, if we're going to be restrictive, then I would restrict chains. You know, so that's, I don't know how far we can, we can push. Yes, yeah, yeah.
These are uses not ownership type or operator type? You know, these are commonly defined in zoning in terms of use, what you're talking about in terms of whether it's a chain. You know, it's interesting. I was reading Boston's going through zoning, something called Streets and Squares, where they're looking at more definitions of these commercial uses and sort of retail uses. I don't know if you're seeing that elsewhere, Josh, where grocery stores are being identified separately. So like, and, so like where you have up like the most desirable, I mean, what we could put in the zoning, couldn't we? That certain types of retail establishments are the most desirable, but others are still allowed? Like, you know how we also have, you can have a table where some are allowed, some are conditional, some are forbidden? So you can make some of them conditional, which means it goes through the process of approval before they become allowed. So I don't know if that's an approach we take, Josh?
Yeah, if there's a hesitance to removing uses altogether, I think at the very least, making sure that they're all listed as by special permit. That way you would have the ability to, you know, deny a certain use under certain conditions.
Yeah, so that. I don't mind. This list I think is good, though. I do, I don't mind.
But I do think to the, you know, to the point, if this is replacing the zoning versus an overlay, the question about the existing filling stations, I think, does become a question for me. And then I do think we could look at that list at the top and see if any of those shift to conditional. to conditional, just to get to Maggie's points or Jim's points about the mix that you might get, you know, if some become, if you don't, I mean, we obviously don't want this, every town struggles with having how many nail salons and how many hair salons and how many medical office versus other things that people.
And banks and restaurants, it's just, we have a lot of the same in East Milton.
Right.
And, you know, this, my second fear is that when we go ahead and approve all this and we mandate the first floor commercial, let's say somebody builds on that Sovereign Bank building where the restaurants, you know, trade at night for that parking and all that parking goes away. You're going to have a lot of businesses that are, I mean, when I go to East Milton Square, I like to pull up Park and go to Mr. Chance for lunch or whatever I do. Without parking, I just keep going. So the more commercial space we pile on without parking, I just think it's going to be a problem long-term. So that's.
We'll talk about parking, yeah.
Am I getting way ahead of myself here?
Yeah, we will.
Oh, all right, sorry, okay. Sorry.
Okay, good.
No, this is great discussion. One, one thing I would, just one point I'd make on the sort of mandatory aspect of it all, I, I do think we can continue to allow commercial alone, like, commercial, we don't want to prohibit if someone really wants to come in and create a single-story commercial structure, for example, this is one of the places in Milton that, that should be allowed. But I think if, where mandatory would be included is if, if multifamily residential is a part of the proposal, then mandatory becomes, or mixed use becomes mandatory.
Right, okay. Exactly, that's.
All right, so a little bit more to do on uses and we will, we'll revisit this conversation when we get back to the type of zoning, as Cheryl was alluding to, because I, I do think there, since we are maybe interested in removing some uses, there might be some value into changing the underlying zoning here as opposed to an overlay district. But there are, I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, there would be the creation of several non-conforming grandfathered uses, which is, you know, not horrible, but that's just a consideration. Sometimes property owners push back against that, but they still have rights as a non-conforming grandfathered use. It's just more, it's just more about the future uses that come in that you'd see, you would want to prohibit additional of those uses in the future. So in terms of approval processes, and I think this is, to me, this seems pretty straightforward, but it'll be good to hear your reaction to it, that we would basically, as I think the survey results showed, think about a tiered approach where we have a certain scale of mixed use, which would be allowed by right, you know, it's very much, I think, in line with what we've heard from the community, that it's a, it's a scale that is three stories, which is more than there is today, but it's not a scale that's out of control or out of people's perception. And if, if someone can make that work financially, I feel like the town and our, and the zoning for Milton should make that as smooth a process as possible. That's something that's very consistent with the vision and we, we just are very supportive of it. I think that would be the way to set the zoning up. Anything more than that, potentially four stories or potentially five stories in certain locations, that would require a special permit and be, also require additional benefits to the town in terms of the types of things we're talking about, affordable housing, investments in the public realm and streetscape, additional sustainability or environmental features, maybe additional parking or traffic benefits to the district in some way. So those are things that would be trade-offs with that additional scale, but that would, so that would be a special permit approach with that additional floor or two. And then, really, to me, it's like, if you get a mixed use development of three stories, let's, let's make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard that, you know, four and five are not desirable, so I don't want to waste too much time discussing four and five stories.
I, I think it's, to me, I didn't say this yet, but the, the value of it, and I agree, so there has been pushback, definitely on five, I think there's been maybe some acceptance of four and some of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, we just went through a permitting process on Granite Ave of four and that was rough. So it's, it wasn't a smooth process. The neighbors are not happy with it, even though four was granted, it's, they're not happy.
I think this is one of those things, we need to go back out to the public with further discussion and not make the decision yet ourselves on this, because three stories, we've heard before that the, you know, depending upon the size of the site, that we don't want zoning to go into place where we don't see any opportunity for any investment. It needs to financially work. And when we did the zoning in Milton Village, we asked a couple of local developers to kind of pencil out whether they thought it, it would work. And they said it barely, barely, you know, like for a local developer would work. And so I just caution against already trying to make something that we don't give an opportunity for someone to come in and make the case that the economics are better if they do four stories and we get 15% affordable housing instead of 10, or something like that. So I think we need more discussion in the community about it, why this is actually, it's a similar approach to Milton Village, which we took, you know, a fair time in working through the process and it did get approved, you know, three stories. And then there's a bonus, you get to go higher, actually there, you know, it was the historic preservation was included in addition to the other things that Josh mentioned because of the historic properties.
So, and I, what I would say to that is, I think five stories is, you know, if, if we're avoiding conflict, you know, upsetting East Milton, let's just take, we should take five stories out of all conversations, because it really was an issue on Granite Ave. But the one thing that I, I've seen that's, that's worked is sometimes when you have a three-story and you have a setback, which could be written into the zoning where it steps back, like a full, so when you're a pedestrian, you're not looking at a fourth story, possibly in certain locations, again, by special permit.
You might want to consider four and a half stories to encourage a sloped roof, too. I think some of these things could come through, you know, some graphic studies to show.
And I think what's going to be really important is, we have sort of along, along Granite and Adams Street, we have some beautiful, some beautiful buildings that are 100 years old, some of the oldest original, that are only two-story buildings. I want to avoid demolition and, and I can see people, and I've already heard people say, well, let's just tear it down and put a four-story building up. And we don't, we, we want to balance it with what is an incentive to demolish, which is something that we've been really focused on, and how we preserve the facades even, you know, I'm not saying the whole building, but that we step it back and we have, we write into our zoning that we preserve the look when people drive into East Milton, that they still feel like it looks like, you know, those beautiful buildings. You know, I'll use Abbey Park for an example. What they've done to that with just even the painting and showing off some of the architectural detail, those are, it's a beautiful building and some of those have just been whitewashed, so you don't even really see the architecture. But the neoclassic designs, some of those buildings are absolutely beautiful and we just, we wouldn't want to do anything to, to risk losing those. But, so I think three, three and four, like, maybe, but it, but it would have to be with a setback. I would want to see a setback.
But you have to remember that not all of it's the same, you know, like you have the, you called it the Rockland Trust Building, that sits in a unique situation where, you know, maybe five could work there, you know, I don't know for sure, but, you know, this is where it's a lot different than the condition along Adams Street. And a lot, a lot different than, let's say, if the Fruit Center's included, where it's already close to the residential butters. So to me, like, the condition of the boundary of the property is, is important. In fact, it's like I talked about, I think, quite a bit on Granite Ave, one of the things, the 440 Granite Ave is one of the reasons that I thought the height was appropriate. It had to do with the Granite Ave and the highway, you know, and if that building were somewhere else, then it may not be. So this is where, if we're trying to write it for an entire, this entirety, rather than sub-districts within it, like in Milton Village, we addressed Adams Street separately than High Street, you know, because we decided that High Street was in different scale character. So that's what I'd like for us to at least consider here, being that nuanced, because it's not all the same condition.
But I think it also goes back to the fact that we want there to be a, that a consistency with what we're doing in East Milton, that it has a charm and a character. And when you're five stories, you come off the highway, you feel like, oh, am I in Southie? Am I, where am I? You're not in Milton. And so I think the difference in that, you know, that's why I'm open to like three and a half, maybe four, four stories, it changes the whole context of the, of the, of the area. And whether it's, you know, on one side, we're trying to make this sort of a, give it a connectiveness. And I think if we're having, you know, right now, 440 Granite is going to stand out like a sore thump, sore thumb from the rest of the town. It is going to be unlike anything this town has ever had and it got, it got forced on us because it was a site plan approval. So we, we can talk more about that, but definitely I like that, you know, I'm open to the three stories being site plan approval, but definitely special permit.
I agree about special permit above three.
And I just think five stories, it just, we shouldn't even, it shouldn't be on the table because it does not fit into the New England Village feel that we're trying to create.
So Milton Village has it, you know, Milton Village has.
It's a very different area.
That's a gorgeous brick building. That's a really nice brick building.
Because it has buildings that exist there that are historic buildings, so the context fits in.
I would still argue that the Rockland Trust Building, maybe, you know, if you, if you look about, if you look at that, those boundaries, some of those buildings are not historic buildings in East Milton Square. They don't have the same character as Milton Village. And you, you can write the design guidelines and it's not all about total number of, total height, you know, if you set, if you cap it so low, you're going to get flat-roofed buildings, built out to the max because the people are going to need their square footage, then you're going to start putting setbacks on it. No one's going to build, no one's going to be able to build here because of the, you're not giving them enough reason, enough economic reason or incentive that they can cover their expenses.
Yeah, we get to.
So it's, it's a balance between what you're trying to achieve and how you achieve it. And you've got to build in a little bit of flexibility in order to get some of the things that you want, in, in my opinion. And, you know, as, as we looked at those guidelines and, and standards in Milton Village, you know, being able to have that half-story, meaning that you can sculpt the roof or you can set it back, is really important. So maybe it's not five, maybe it's four and a half, but, and may, as a special permit.
So can I interrupt you? What does the half mean? Does the half mean?
The half means if you have the sloped roof, you're only counting like.
So could you do them around the attic and?
That square footage on that upper floor, not the full amount, right?
So it would be a fourth floor with, the gable would be another half-story? Like, I'm trying to picture it. Or three stories with a sloped, a steep pitch where you can.
So if you have three and a half, it would technically be four with part of it being cut into the roof or part of it set back. If it was four and a half, it would technically be five, but it would either be set back or cut into the slope, right? So it, because if you just say three stories, you're going to get flat-roofed buildings everywhere because no one's going to lose their square footage under the roof.
Well, the buildings that Meredith referenced on Adams and Granite are two stories with flat roofs, right? And they're very nice.
Those are pitched.
I'm thinking like the liquor store or the aesthetics building that was just redone.
Well, yeah, basically I'm talking.
It's a two-story with a flat roof.
Killian BGR, the, you know, those, that building and wrapping around.
Yeah, I guess I don't mind a flat roof with that architecture. It doesn't bother me.
Yeah, it works, it works with that.
So if when three stories there with a flat roof, it wouldn't be the end of the world. How big is the Falcone Building that's going up? Is that five or six?
Six.
That's six stories. Right.
It could go through.
Wow. This can be difficult.
Yeah, and that's.
And I don't. We should have talked to him about that before we gave him his approval.
Yeah, lost opportunity right there, Maggie.
He was going to say that is, what's the other company? Corcoran.
Well, whatever, I mean, the, the point is it's going up, it's going to be six stories. We want to emulate that with, you know, so I guess a five-story would look small next to that, but I think a three would look a lot better, you know, because.
So let's, we, we can move, I don't think we have to get stuck on this tonight, but I would like to say mixed use development up to four stories.
But also, I'm trying to be realistic and I don't want to waste a lot of time, you know, listening to residents push back for five stories when we know it's going to be, not be well-accepted.
We need a, we need a public meeting is what we need.
So I'm just trying to save ourselves.
I agree with you about five, but I think there can, argument could be made to look at or consider four and a half. And that may not, otherwise we're going to get, end up with four and probably be flat and, you know, that's 440 Granite Ave, right?
That's why three and a half, three and a half would work nicely.
Depends if the economics work, yeah.
Well, I look at the Elliott, the physical, I, you know, the example I drive by is I love the way Elliott Physical Therapy, that building made it work, where they have apartments up above and very successful retail down below. And it's tastefully done. Parking in the back. And it's, it's just, it works when you, you know, when you're leaving a residential area and it transitions, you know, into the commercial.
It's a smallish building, so, you know, if you think about like the Rockland Trust building again, you know, you're not going to have it, the scale of that site is different than the scale of the other. And that's where I think this, that's why I said, like, the size of the sites should dictate in some way kind of what our standards are for them, because what's, what's appropriate for one may not be appropriate for the other. And, and maybe we can just ask that Josh think about this when he's looking at some, because if we're, Rockland Trust is not in the business district at the moment, but it is a major building in the East Milton Square, so we should give a lot of thought to that, you know, maybe there's something that applies only to that piece of the district. I'm not sure, but.
And I just, we talk about Conley's Building being pretty, but Jubenville's property is very, very attractive.
Yes, I love it.
You know, and if, I wouldn't want another Rockland Trust on that corner.
Right.
It is so, it is just, everything about that property is so attractive.
And this goes to the mapping, but I think we, when we're thinking about the mapping, there are certain things that we might not want to, that we might want to pull out. And I, because I had asked to, when we were doing the MBTA zoning, the Milton Arts Center, I think we might not want, we might want to preserve that building. And the Milton Post Office is on the National Register and I think it's one of the most beautiful buildings. And that's one that I would maybe want to see just carved out.
But the problem, Meredith, is if it gets carved out and the post office sells the building, what's somebody going to do with the building? They could, you know, you're not giving them an opportunity for a new use. We need to think about giving somebody an opportunity for a new use. It doesn't incentivize teardowns, I agree with you. We're doing that and we did it in Milton Village, we're giving an opportunity for a new use, but not incentivizing teardowns. If we exclude them, then what happens to them? Do they become functionally obsolete at some point? So it's different with.
That's why we have to think about that.
We could go back and change the zoning if it ever goes, if the, if the government sold that building, we could go back and change the zoning, right? Town meeting?
It'd be by special permit if someone came in and wanted to do something.
So this is where I think we need to look at these conditions, because if, I would support, like, if you said, okay, maybe some of these, if it's right up against a single family, there's no opportunity for the increased height, maybe. And other places that it would, there would be opportunity. And that's why I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all, because it's so.
I agree with that.
Nuanced, yeah, and it's very.
We should consider it that way.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. Okay.
That's, I'll make, that's very good discussion. I think we can take all that into consideration, take a more nuanced approach, but you, kind of using this as a bit of a starting point as well. So I did want to just compare, compare these to the existing zoning characteristics that are there for the business district, but also the proposed 3A overlay district as well. And those are on the screen. And we, we added a few diagrams just because it's, it's helpful to see diagrams and sometimes it's easier to see the point. So this is, we did it, not trying to pick on a single property, but it's more effective to do diagrams on a real place, so we chose 561 Adams Street, which is the Santander Bank property. Again, nothing, nothing against this property or the existing use or the current configuration, but just thought it would be useful to look at some of these characteristics in, in a real location. So this is a lot which is smaller than a half acre on its own. It's, has a one-story building, it's about a 5,700 square foot building, single, single story, 17 parking spaces, give or take. It was built in 1963. See a photo of it there. And so under the current business district characteristics, there's, these are the setbacks, so no front setback, 12-foot rear setback when it butts. these are the setbacks. So no front setback, 12-foot rear setback when it abuts a non-residential property, a six-foot side setback. And then if you look at the height as it is allowed today, as of right, it's three stories, 45 feet. But this is for a commercial use only. And so for a commercial use only, I think that the market has basically shown that it's not, not there for a commercial use only at three stories in East Milton Square. So you haven't seen that type of development occurring.
I think because you, you can't park it.
Right. And so this, this, the, just to explain, the, the box that we're diagramming here is a hypothetical building zoning envelope. It's not meant to depict architecture, but really just kind of the box which you could build a building within. And it is defined by those zoning characteristics. But as Cheryl astutely pointed out already, that it is not considered parking. And so then by special permit, that zoning envelope is allowed to extend another two stories up to 65 feet. But again, this is for a commercial only structure. And there has been no, no really feasible project to come forward under those, under that description. As Cheryl pointed out, the parking is really insurmountable for, if you were to kind of build out a zoning envelope of this nature, it's about a 14,500 square foot floor plate. Again, these are, this is not how a building would look or how a building would be developed. But just using these types of numbers, you would need over 400,000 square feet of parking area to fulfill the parking requirements at one space per 250 square feet. That's an excess of 1,200 parking spaces would be required to support a, a structure of this type under the current requirements. So that's another, a very strong reason why this type of project is, has never been proposed or would never proceed. Under, very similar comparison, under the 3A overlay, the setbacks that are established there, 15-foot on the front, 20-foot on the rear, five-foot on the side. And that's a two and a half story. So that would be two stories. And then as you've been describing in your conversation, a half story within the pitched roof. And that's up to 42 feet to the peak of that roof. So this is, again, something that would be difficult to park. And also, in this case, there's a density constraint expressed. So here, if you kind of run the numbers, you have, would probably amount to, at this buildable envelope, to about 43 units per acre on a property this size. And the units per acre is limited to 30. So that would equate to about 12 units if you took it back down to the 30 unit per acre maximum, which is expressed. And that would require 12 parking spaces at one parking space per unit, which is about 4,000 square feet, which is a more achievable setup. And the assumption described here though is that if, if we had, through our zoning, if we were able to put together a three-story mixed use sort of approach by right, that that would potentially be a more attractive redevelopment opportunity than the two and a half story residential only.
So if we think about this though, 4,000 square feet on a lot that's 9,500 square feet. So already half your, your lot area, if you did it on the first floor, is parking. So that means you're, you're really getting a half a story of occupied space plus the two floors above it. So the, the economics of that, then you start to think about. And even with that, how much commercial space do you get? And so like, is parking allowed as part of the first floor? Are you building above the parking? All of these things, I think, become things that need to be thought through and tested in order to see that the zoning really is, would achieve anything in terms of new development.
Agreed, agreed. And they, we're, we're starting with this type of analysis now. I would say that we have, will continue this type of analysis as the zoning characteristics mature and develop. But would, would be hoping to get a better feel for just the type of scenario you described, Cheryl, is sort of how feasible is this arrangement? I would say, one, one thing that I would hope that these are illustrating is just the difficulty of parking, the parking requirements and how you can fit everything onto the site. That's really the challenge.
Especially on a small site. Be interesting if you use another site, if you had a chart even of how, of lot sizes in the district, because I was looking at this relative to the MBTA zoning, you know, what could you actually achieve on, on some of those lots, given the lot sizes? And you only have a handful that you're not really hamstrung by what we were just looking at. Like, you know, by the time you do your parking, how much do you have left to be occupied? And then how much square footage do you have left up above it if your height's capped? So I think it'd be interesting to see what the lot sizes are as we think about these dimensional character, or standards.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think that the, the lot at that Santander Bank property is perhaps one of the more generous lots, in fact.
Yeah, there's lots that are smaller. They're going to be even that much more difficult.
But I think, look at the number, this, this number of units that we were looking at. I, I think of communities similar to ours where you can see a mixed use project where there might be eight beautiful, really high-end units above that would sell for a million dollars a p, you know, that, there's profit margin there. And they're, they can be beautifully done, and they're just not going to be 30 units. It's not going to be a 40-unit building. That's what the East Milton neighbors are saying. We don't want it to be overly dense. We want to have incentive for some mixed use. But you could do a really nice project with six to eight units, really beautiful. You've done them. You've designed, you know, I'm sure some.
Yeah, they.
That don't have to be.
Yeah, we're just setting the maximum, right? The developer will set what they think the market is for them. And I think what we want to make sure is that what we set is actually workable, right? That we can actually, that it would work. We, right? Josh, you don't want to set dimensional standards that only work for one site in the whole district or three sites in the whole district.
Certainly, yeah.
You know, we want to have it tested out. Like we did in Milton Village. You did testing, Josh, and then I did some further testing just so that we could see that what we had would actually work. And that's, I think it's the same kind of exercise as necessary here because there's a lot of similar characteristics.
Yep.
To the lot sizes and the challenges of, of that in terms of parking.
We have to make sure it also works for, why I keep going back to parking in the East Milton Square experience, right? So we're going to, if, if this gets built, you take away 17 spots that satisfy the decorating den and the other business that's in there and what used to be the bank. And sometimes I, when I go to Stella's, I sneak in there and park because there's no parking on the street. So now we're swallowing up parking.
Yeah, I mean, the owner, sorry, go ahead.
Now we're, we're swallowing up parking. And granted, we're adding parking to satisfy the eight or 10 units that are up there. But there's no, there's no parking for the building that's next door. Now there's no parking for the commercial space that's going in there. The business.
If I'm the property owner though, I have a right to develop my property, right? It's not my responsibility to provide parking for you when you can't find parking somewhere else. So you have to give that property owner a fair chance of, of having something, or they're going to, they close the bank, what happens there next? I mean, you.
Well, you build this and then nobody goes to East Milton Square because they can't park. I, I keep coming back to it, but it's, I'm just thinking of it.
I actually think that, just like in Milton Village, we actually need something that's more of a district parking solution, which is that the, you know, like you have in other communities, I, they have a downtown parking area. It's owned by the municipality that supports the businesses. Like, you know, beautiful downtowns like Chatham, for example, on the Cape, they've got a whole bunch of parking in the, in the back that's owned by the municipalities. And I think there's been efforts and discussion of that in East Milton Square before. And it's challenging because where does the land come from for it? And Milton Village, the same thing. I mean, there is a small municipal parking lot on, off of Wharf Street there. But I think that becomes sort of the, the solution is to think about some kind of district parking.
I agree. You know, if the town, you know, look at Citizens Bank, that is one of the most underutilized parking lots. It's a huge parking lot next to 440 Granite and a very, you know, a wonderful business that we have in town. But Citizens Bank does not own that. And that would be a perfect site for the town to approach the owner and consider acquisition of that as a municipal parking area.
Can we use CPA funds?
Oh, for.
You have committees.
Yep. But there are, yeah, across from, on Mechanic Street, there's a potential lot the town could, could acquire, which I, I'm concerned when, when Abbey Park loses their parking behind it, that when the Falcone development goes in, that that parking is all going to be displaced. And that's critical to those restaurants. And if there's a parking that the town could purchase, you know, and beautifully buffer it with landscape, that...
So does that become part of this zoning? Do we wipe that in? Or how does that work?
I don't know. That's something that Josh is a recommendation that you, that we make out of this.
It was recommended in the Barrett Report. And I think, you know, our board could go to the select board and what, to the community and talk about that because it wouldn't be something that comes out of zoning necessarily, or could, I guess, in, in that you allow parking use that's a, that's a district parking use in certain areas. But the actual acquisition of land and, and building a parking lot and owning a parking lot would have to come through the select board, right?
So I'm all for town buying property. And, you know, we should never dispose of property because we never know what our needs are going to be in the future. So I'm a huge advocate of, of, of using any available funds bonding to buy property for the town. And especially if you look at the parking lot down at the church, you know, what is that, East Congregational Church? That.
Oh, right. That's a beauty.
You know, that would be a shame for the town to pass up on possibly purchasing that parking lot there.
Or the backside of the art center, that whole open space there would make a great parking lot.
Well, I think they're talking, the town is talking about doing that as Milton Arts Center doing some parking. I think there's a study possibly on doing that. So, all right. Thank you.
I should mention too, I, I do have a colleague of mine at MIPC in the Transportation Department, Adi Notcher, and he is working currently, I believe mostly in coordination with the, with Tim and your planning department on a parking management plan for East Milton Square. And we've been talking about and trying to sort of coordinate strategizing. But I think there, there is a lot of parking in East Milton Square, both on-street and off-street. I think part of the issue is that it's, as tends to happen, I mean, it's not unusual, is really sort of property by property and use by use and sort of delineated and regulated as such. But if, the more that parking in a district like this can become a shared resource for all properties, the better the parking supply and efficiency works. And so I would just say that, that's a strategy that's afoot. And I think there are some efficiencies that can be had there. In particular, very simple things like having the employees and staff that will park and work at these places all day should not be taking the prime parking spaces. Not saying that they do that, but sometimes they do that. And so that's an example of how parking supply could be used more effectively to really make it work well for, for patrons of the district.
Well, it'd be great if that study comes alongside this work because it is something that there is a lot of concern about, to your point, Jim. So I, one of the things I've heard over time in working on different initiatives is that people, you know, express their concerns and they don't feel as if actions are taken. And, you know, we only have certain jurisdiction and others have other jurisdiction. And I was learning recently that in Milton Village, you know, a, a recommendation that came from the transportation engineer regarding a traffic light, which was going, was highly recommended by them, is kind of faltering. And, you know, so when we go about zoning and we say that these recommendations are made in order to make this zoning work, and if those things don't actually happen, it's hard for us to go, you know, to have, to have the confidence of the public to think that these things actually will happen. And so I, I do think it's important to have these things going in tandem, this parking utilization and any other recommendations that might come that would be helpful to the conditions that people are frustrated with.
And would we ever ask the Traffic Commission to come to one of these meetings? Because they are the ones who get all the complaints. You know, all the residents go to the Traffic Commission. So maybe they need to come to one of our meetings to tell us what they're hearing.
Well, I think we, well, we hear a lot, the loading zones are issues, you know, and it's really enforcement, I, I think primarily what happens in East Milton Square. I pulled down, I was coming down a side street coming onto Adams Street, and there was a car next to Abbey Park in the opposite lane going the wrong way. And it was with blinkers on and had dropped somebody off and had crossed over the Starbucks. And I almost took a picture to, you know, to send it to the Traffic Commission, but where, there's no enforcement. So without that.
Driver, it's a total aside, but driver behavior has gotten so horrible. I mean, I'm dumbfounded when I see what some drivers are doing.
And it wasn't an Uber, it wasn't a.
DoorDash guy.
A DoorDash. It was, yeah, an older gentleman dropping his wife off. And it was, anyway, not to, but I, but I think that could be at some point, you know, when we have a plan, it would be worth passing it by, yeah, other boards. Good. Thank you.
All right. So I, I will, I will continue, but just to begin to conceptualize the ideas that we're talking about in this initial approach to the zoning in this, in a similar diagram. So thinking about that zero to 10-foot range for a front setback to really position those new investments near the sidewalk, but also maybe give room for expanding the sidewalk for outdoor seating or dining, et cetera. Variation on the other setbacks based upon the context like we were talking about, depending on the adjacent use and the scale, there would be some variety in terms of the, the conditions of those setbacks. And then thinking about exploring, and I think that the exploration in terms of parking requirements is, is very young and needs to mature quite a bit. But definitely thinking about, in decreasing the amount of parking required per square foot of commercial, I think is very necessary. And then trying to find the right requirement for the residential above and doing some tests to see that it could all fit. But my suspicion is that we're probably going to have to even reduce these initial concepts as they're expressed today, which are, which are maybe for some community members already pushing it. So if we look, just visualize that initial mixed use by right type approach where we were thinking, well, three stories, maybe up to 45 feet is, as was in the previous zoning. And that this could be that zoning envelope that is the approach where if you had a mixed use proposal that fits within this zoning envelope, then that would be, I think, a really very strong investment and improvement in some of these properties. As we move up from that height, we're already kind of considering some of the things that have shown up in the conversation amongst the board members this evening. So if you were, this is showing up to four stories by special permit, and that might be up to 55 feet. And even in that case, requiring a step back from the third story where the fourth story would be pulled in from that plane of facades to really reduce the visual impact of that additional height. And then similarly, if we were able to go to consider, maybe in certain locations, as was described, up to four and a half or five stories under those same circumstances, continuing the step back as occurred at the third story. And that, and those two conditions again would be at special permit. So I, as I was describing, the, the parking, I think is something that needs, needs further work. If we looked at, where did I, oh, here we are. So if we look at the calculations of this three-story hypothetical zoning envelope box, you would end up needing to require about 18 parking spaces for the total structure. So 18, nine spaces for the non-residential ground floor at 1,500 square feet per space of use. And then moving up to the floors above, if you estimate that you've maybe got around 18 units above in this hypothetical envelope, that, that would be at one story per, or one parking space per unit, excuse me, 18 additional spaces. So you'd be around 27 spaces total, which is going to be tough to fit on the property unless there's structured parking or parking within the footprint, footprint of the structure, which aren't impossible to do, but are expenses which then the development will have to carry. And that's about 9,000 square feet. And that's about 9,000 square feet of parking area, which isn't insurmountable, but is, is definitely a burden which will impact the feasibility of, of this type of development. And then this is the list to be continued and further developed that we're just tracking in terms of the other considerations which are top of mind for the community, the traffic improvements, traffic studies as, as development approvals are occurring, thinking about things like transportation demand management to reduce the need for a vehicle when some of these new residents come. That could include thinking about enhanced transit connections, transit passes, zipcar spaces for shared automobile use, any way that we could get the share of auto, share of vehicles per household to be reduced in the, in the district and neighborhood would, would benefit the walkability and future development and just livability of the district as it continues to evolve. Thinking about parking and public realm improvements, again, and then things like affordable housing and sustainability. And I added on to this list too, historic preservation, which we hadn't mentioned before, but that the planning board has mentioned in this conversation tonight. And then adding detail to how all this might, might really materialize in the types of aesthetics that have been touched on in our conversation too, and getting those into design guidelines that can help, I think, build confidence, hopefully in support for this approach to the zoning changes. So that we touched on this, and I'll just return to it here, but the, I think the question of overlay or underlying zoning changes is a material question that we won't resolve this evening, but will want to continue to consider. With an overlay, the current regulations remain in place, which is, of course, there's a certain cleanliness and efficiency to doing that. There's less chance for unintended consequences, honestly, with the overlay because the current zoning remains in place and there's less ability to have something happen that wasn't intended, but that could, could be fixed, I would say. And then it can lead to potentially downside is confusion around multiple regulations, particularly if there's multiple overlays or, or other things going on, sort of which, which zone am I supposed to use? In terms of an underlying zone, it's changes to the current regulations. So it would be the business district, we could create a distinct underlying zone so that we're not impacting other business zones that may exist around the town. But this would be really the purpose to allow more control over future outcomes, particularly in those areas where we do want to remove uses. That's better done with a modification to the underlying zoning. Or there could be a hybrid approach where we do remove uses from the current zoning as it exists and then have an overlay which includes our new opportunities would be another sort of version here that's not expressed, but that, that would be a third approach, I think.
That's good.
So for, any further discussion on any of that?
I was going to mention one other thing. Josh, I think under uses, medical marijuana facilities are allowed in the business districts. Just, can you check that?
Well, I think that's in our bylaws, it's not allowed, right?
No, only in our business district it is.
Medical is, but recreational is not in my recollection. But it's just one of the uses, you, I didn't see it up there and it's just something...
I don't believe it's, I think it's on the granite app portion. I think that's where it was zoned for. I don't think this area is allowed.
But if we change underlying, if we change the business zoning, to his point, then it changes the business zoning for wherever there's business unless we make a new district here. It's just something I wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Look at it. I, I don't know exactly if it's all business districts, but I thought we looked at that in Milton Village.
Yeah, I can check.
Now, what are most towns doing? Are they, is there a preference for an overlay or changing the underlying? It's mixed bag.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's pretty mixed, depending on the situation. You see both, both types of approaches occur pretty frequently in, across towns for, for the reasons that are described here. But I, I would say where, where there are things that you really don't want to happen in the current zoning, we should probably clean that up one way or another so that you don't have one of those outcomes occur. If, if it's still out under zoning, it can still happen, so.
Which reminds me, I don't think we ever did that in Milton Village, cleaned up the underlying. So maybe we should do that too, removing the gas station.
Yeah.
We still, we have the overlay.
And was it a...
We didn't change underlying.
Yeah.
That's, that could be something to clean up in this whole process.
Mm-hmm. Great.
In terms of next steps, just to provide to the board's consideration, I, as you mentioned, another public forum is, is important in this process. And we think that trying to land that probably in the month of March, if we can identify some dates that might work with the town calendar would make a lot of sense. And we have the runway right now to promote and get the outreach and word out there if we can get a date established soon or later. And that would be, the purpose of that public forum would be to take these, a similar presentation to what you have all just seen and really focus in on some of these questions which remain open and get additional feedback. Do some additional analysis prior to that meeting about the parcel-by-parcel approach to the district itself, looking at the heights a little bit more, et cetera, but then bring those questions back to the community to see if we can get even more clarity on some of them.
So I think also it'd be helpful to, I think the Barrett Report identified a couple of sites that could be a district parking. I think it would be important to address that as well. So if we said, Meredith, I think that was one of the sites where that citizens is, it does, I think if we just identify it, because otherwise, I just hope, I just worry that we'll get caught up in the, the parking challenge and not on some of the other issues when we go back for public, another public forum. And I would like another round of this, the discussion of the items that we did tonight with you, Josh, before we go back to the public, just so we are clear about, at least having more, us having more information before taking it to the public.
And is there another site in town that, like, we're all comfortable with, like 36 Central? It might be nice to, like, I started creating this spreadsheet of all the existing...
I have a spreadsheet.
But, oh, do you? And so like, if you look at 30, is it 36 Central? That's, so if you, they, it would be interesting to know if they, if they're parking, if they have parking issues. You know, I don't even, I don't even know how many spaces they have, but I never really hear anybody complaining about that building and it's, it's mixed use.
They have an advantage of the sloping to park underneath, which is what we had in Milton Village too.
Yeah, they have underneath the parking, so.
So to me, that seems like a successful...
It's a four-story building.
Yeah.
It was close to the sidewalk. So when you say that four stories is too much, people, at the time, I wasn't, you know, paying it, maybe I was living here, but I wasn't involved in active, in planning activities at the time. But people who live in that area, I've been told, they heard that a lot of people were worried it was going to ruin everything. And now it's like, everybody feels like it's just an integral part of that neighborhood. So...
So that's three stories with the...
No, it's four, it's, it's first floor retail and three stories of...
And then it, actually, when you drop it in back, it's even taller in the back because of the parking underneath.
And I think there's 18 units in there.
I have the, I have the special permit for that with, and the spreadsheet that I shared some, when we were, when I was going through my analysis of the existing, you know, multifamilies included the parking. So if you have that Excel, I can reshare it, but...
And they do have off-site parking. They have, their commercial, their, all of the commercial buildings have parking back behind, so, for a certain number of units that are designated for...
But they, I don't think that they have, like, the customers who come to the hair salon, for example, park on the street. By the way, one of the things that is not widely known is that 131 Elliott, that parking lot is available to anybody during the day. There's no sign that says it is, but that was one of the public benefits that was allowed for a greater number of units there and greater height at that building. So that's an example of a, and that if you give a little height or you give a little more square footage, you can get something in return. There, there's parking spaces that we got in return. And unfortunately, the special permit didn't say, because I've asked Tim about this, that there has to be a sign there that tells the public about that. But we can just, if all the businesses there advertise it. But I think it's a good example of, of a public benefit that can come out of a little bit more height or a little bit more square footage.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from the public in East Milton Square on the height. Literally have an open meeting and let everyone come and just talk about it. Did they want five stories?
But if you, let's just say if you could get a parking lot as, in return, if you could get a shared parking lot with, let's say, 10, 12, 15, I don't remember how many spaces, a hundred, would, would that, so this is a trade-off. Like, I know there's, there's, I learned of this interesting planning process that happened, I think it was in Mattapan, where they said, here's the list of wants and here's the list of things that you have to accept if you want to get the want, right? So you can, like, they add it up to 100%, so something is a plus and something is a minus. So you have to be willing to live with something in order to get something that you would want in return. You don't have to go through that entire exercise, but it'd be worth somebody going through it to say, okay, if you could get additional parking or if you could get whatever other benefits that were, get identified, would you accept that additional half-story or that additional one and a half-story?
And the other question I always thought, what are the thoughts on a elevated parking garage? So the town owns the upper parking at the Fruit Center. What if we did a second floor up there? You know, how would that affect the aesthetics of the, of the town?
But you probably just can be designed to, to be, you know, to fit in.
Yeah, Newburyport built a great one. It's huge.
Yeah, the, you know, they, you know, they can be built in, the ones that we all see that we don't like, a lot of them are precast concrete that are, you know, sloped and so forth, but they don't have to be built that way, especially on small sites. So that's one of the things that was talked about in Milton Village is on that lot off of Wharf Street because the land slopes that you could just kind of, the problem with a small lot is the ramping.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So that's where if you have a change of topography, you can take advantage of it, it's beneficial.
It's a challenge, yeah, for sure. But I just don't see five stories and the just, I just know, having gone through the 440 granite, it wasn't...
Yeah, I'm just trying to save us all.
The more you build it, the more parking you need, it's just, but, but I agree that we need to really look...
I'm trying to save us from getting some bruises.
Yeah.
That's why a public forum, a couple of public forums would be great.
All right, so, Josh, so are we saying we would like Josh to come back?
One more time, I think, before the forum.
One more time before the forum? So that would be...
In particular, the, the lots and, you know, the, in terms of the boundary and what, what uses are within those boundaries, because that's a big topic to talk to the public about, the boundary. We talked about that. And then I think the, sort of, that also informs these sort of dimensional standards and like the test that you showed us, Josh, a couple more of those to kind of show the challenges with these sites and, and how, you know, parking requirements are going to really influence what we can get in terms of first floor uses even. Those are, I think are really important. And then if you had any, you know, if you were able to have some kind of a height analysis, you know, how when you can, you can cut a section, here's the building, here's the street, here's the building, the further they are from one another, the, and then where you set it back, there's, you know, if you are wider, you can be taller and set it back and not have a sense of being too tight, too tall. But if you are narrow and you go the same height, your, the feeling on the street is a lot different. And that's where, if you had any of that, like, if you cut a section through Adams Street, let's say where Abbey Park is or something, and then you cut it where you're cutting across the highway over to the Rockland Trust building, just to kind of give a sense of how a two-story building on one street and a four-story building on another street are actually totally different depending upon the characteristics of the street.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just for discussion purposes. I don't know, Josh, you can think about whether you think that would be helpful, but I, I do think this height question needs a bit more visuals to help with the discussion with the community. Because, you know, we did, we spent a lot of time on the visuals in, in Milton Village, and I think it was very helpful for people to see the heights.
And I think that's, in the, in the community forum that Josh brought, he brought some that were, like, people were like, no way, like, that was not what we want. And there, but there were others, you know, I just, I remember the Canton, the cute little, you know, in the center, some, some great visuals that you, that you had also. And so I think he did do that, presented those at the forum. And if we did that again, I think having some...
Yeah, I was just thinking, scale-wise, not even like design, it's just more about massing scale, but whatever, you've heard the suggestions, Josh, maybe you can think about that. And I, I just think I'd like to work through as a board some of these, these visuals that before it's part of the public forum.
You know, and I understand the whole concept of stepping back and it's reducing visual impact, but like, it's still five stories. You know, even if it steps back, we're still losing light and sun, it's creating, you know, shade. You know, you can't, you know, plant big shade trees because they're going to grow into the side of the, the, the buildings. So I understand, you know, reducing visual impact, but by stepping it back, but I just think that's like more aspirational, you know what I mean? It's not like we, the, when you're on the ground, you can still tell it's a four-story building or it's a five-story building.
It kind of depends how far it's set back though. If it's set back, if it's a narrower street and it's set back 10 feet or 12 feet versus two feet or five feet, it can make a difference. But it's, it's, it's more the, I think more the sloped roof if you want that opportunity. The half-story can impact that. But I sometimes think, you know, the stepping back the building drives a certain design requirement that isn't always beneficial, so.
I just know we, we listened to, I don't know how many public hearings at 440 granite, and everybody, that is the, what the one thing, everybody came, people were open-minded about having a project, and that was on the highway. So imagine having it not on the expressway. Five stories is just a, it's, it's just not what...
I feel like it's a non-starter.
I do too.
I think we should hear from the public first before we start saying, oh, five stories, they're going to love it. I think we should hear them say, hey, five stories, we don't love it.
Yeah.
And then back into it. This is, I mean, I don't live in East Milton Square, I go there for lunch. I'm not going to be next to the shade, the five-story building that shades my house. I'd like to hear from the residents first.
The neighbor, you know, looking down on your, from the balcony, looking...
Goodbye privacy, goodbye light.
Yeah, there's no privacy.
Yeah. It just brings, it brings so much density.
And I think it's finding what Josh is saying, making it, you know, economically feasible to give incentives for redevelopment where we need, you know, some of the parcels that do need redevelopment, how you incentivize that, but that we're not doing over, we're not over densifying this, an area that we can't park, that we, that we just, that, that's considered overdeveloped, and we don't want to do that. We want to, we want to keep sort of a, a neighborhood charm to the, to the area. And I think we can do that, we can find the balance.
Yeah, and I think, you know, you might not like this, Josh, but reducing parking spots, is that an aspirational goal? We're still a suburb. I know everybody wants us to be annexed by Boston, but we're not. And we all have cars and, you know, we can talk about the, the 20-year-olds having car, not having cars and biking. My kids in their 20s, they both have their own cars and they'd be lost. Yeah, they'd be lost without it.
My dear, my third wants a car.
Yeah, and so I think it's aspirational to really think people are going to ride their bikes.
So remember that the zone, that a developer will propose what they feel they need for the market. So if they feel they need one space per unit or two space per unit, unless we put a maximum in, they'll, they'll propose what they think that they need. There was a lot of work done, and MIPC has a whole parking... There was a lot of work done, and MAPC has a whole parking, over-parking sort of analysis. But when we did Milton Village, I called several of the property owners there and managers to find out how the parking worked. And the rental at the Baker Chocolate, I think only had a half a parking space per unit. I mean, this was next to the trolley, so it's a little different, but the...
That's city, that's a city.
I went to build, did a job there, and I had to park way, way by River Street, it was ridiculous.
And I talked to Milton Hill House and I talked to the other condo building there. And, you know, it, there was, I would say that, in my experience too, designing housing, multifamily housing for clients, even if the city or the municipality is looking for less parking, they're not going to propose a project that doesn't meet what they think their clientele will need. And so for condos, they always want to have one unit, one parking space per unit at a minimum, because they feel like they're not going to sell their condos otherwise. And some might have more than that, right? So I think when we talk about what we worry, what we think people are going to want parking, we're not going to have proposals unless a developer thinks that they've got enough parking.
All right, so, so if we look at our next dates, and I don't think we have to have even this long of a meeting, but we have the, we have a meeting scheduled, which is fairly open right now, March 14th. We have the 22nd, which is pretty full, but the March 14th, and then maybe we could do a public forum later in, in March. I don't know if that works with your schedule, Josh, but we, we could have one more just follow-up discussion, particularly on the mapping, maybe that's...
I have a hold for another evening meeting on the 14th.
Okay.
Not confirmed yet, I could maybe confirm.
All right.
Get back to you on the 20, the 22nd was the other date?
We have, we sort of have a full agenda on the 22nd of February. We have a March 28th meeting scheduled, but we could either maybe move our, our, our meeting on the 14th to a date that, you know, maybe move it to a Wednesday, I don't know if that would work.
Well, we could shift the, you know, to 7 and 21 if that helps, but, right, I mean, we...
Yeah, before doing that, I'd want to check with Sean because I feel like his schedules, yeah. I mean, I'm flexible, but...
Check with Sean, you don't want to hear from the public first, huh?
No, 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 for our meeting.
Just to have a follow-up meeting.
Before we have him back, okay.
Now, for the planning board meeting.
I get it, I get it.
A further discussion of what we talked about tonight before going to the public, just so we're...
I understand, I was just thinking we should get the public input and then start analyzing it, but we'll do it the other way.
Look at dates, but...
Well, what if we just put him on the 14th, just as a placeholder?
Wait a minute.
Then we can...
Josh isn't available the 14th?
He's not sure yet.
I need to confirm, I have a meeting, but it's only listed as a hold, not as confirmed.
I see, okay. All right, so, one would be, what day of the week did we do the last public? Was it on a Thursday or was that like a Monday?
Tim, do you remember, did we, or what day of the week we did that?
I feel like it was a Monday.
It was a Monday.
It was a Monday, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it was Monday, November 6th.
Were you happy with that turnout? Was that a good turnout for you?
Yeah, I thought the in-person meeting was, was great. The, there was, to be honest, the responses to the survey was a little light afterwards than what we normally see, but I think overall it was, was very good attendance, it was a pretty good meeting.
I think having it at the Milton Arts Center was a good venue for people, because they could walk to that.
So Monday could be a good...
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of attention with the MBTA zoning, so that might be why it didn't get as much on the survey. But I think a month, what about like the 25th of March as a, that weekend?
To hold that for your public forum?
Yeah, public forum, rather.
Yeah, that, that looks free, yeah.
And then we'll try to find a time that we could meet with you separately before, but, but yeah, at least the 25th, let's, that would be great to pencil that in. Tim, does that work for you and Josh and Julia?
What do we say, the 20?
5th, March 25th for our next public forum?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Are you at the Arts Center at 6:30 or 7 or?
So we should, yeah, we should try to reserve the Arts Center?
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to them tomorrow morning and confirm. And, you know, if not, we can, we can try to work through something else if we need to.
Okay, was that a 6:30 start time we had last time? Or 7? 7 is probably easier for...
I think, yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember it being 6:30, it could have been, but, you know, 7 is nice and easy.
Okay, that's great. All right. And then we'll wait to hear from you, Josh, on the 14th, if you could join us at that meeting at some point, just to touch base.
Yeah, so I'll confirm that as soon as possible.
All right. Anything else?
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you very much, this is great.
Yes, thank you all, very good conversation, gives a lot of great direction, so thank you to the board for their discussion.
Thank you. Tim, did you have anything else before we say goodbye?
Thanks, Josh, great work.
Good night, thanks, Josh.
And I notice there's not too many people on, you know, watching this. I'm wondering if we should let, like, the East Milton Neighborhood Association know, so their residents might want to review this meeting.
Right, and the slide deck, the updated slide deck? Tim, we have a, the one we received doesn't have all the slides that he used, so if we could get that and then have that posted on the website as well?
Will do.
Members, before we lose Josh, I just wanted to note, we have a hand raise from the public from a Joe, if he wanted to accept any public comment.
Oh, sure. Yes, Joe?
Hi, hi, how are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Joe Kern, Grafton Ave. I came to this board after the public meeting in November, you know, and I expressed some of my views. I guess I'm happy to see that I feel much better about the presentation that was made tonight versus the presentation that was made to us back in November. I actually feel that the, the consultant listened to what was said there. And, and I know it's getting late, so I'll try to be brief here. The Barrett Report that was presented back in 2021, that was never publicly shared, I guess, with, with the residents. I know that it was reviewed by the, the planning board. But, you know, I was very concerned when that came out in 2021 because I thought there was going to be some sort of a public discussion about it, and then there wasn't. And then when we got to the presentation in November, it seemed like some of the recommendations were just blindly adopted. And so I feel better about what I, what I saw, saw today. And then, you know, keeping the boundaries the same, you know, I think there is probably some more discussion about it. I, I know that in the neighbors that, that I spoke to before and after that meeting, some of the buildings that are probably historically feel like commercial buildings that aren't in the business district, I think probably could be incorporated into them. And, and I think I said that when I, I'm trying not to recap what I said before, but the medical office building on the corner of Squonham and Adam Street, for instance, I think people just assume it's in the business district and it's not, right? Traffic is obviously very concerning. And then early on, when you were talking about parking, again, after talking to my neighbors, I think the overall feeling was that the existing parking, that as it exists, I'm going to say today, which I know is going to change, is probably what they're looking to make sure that the number of available spaces kind of stays that way. And as you develop, and you guys have already said it, as you develop those lots, some of those spaces go away. And how do you balance the two of them? And I, I think mostly the people would like to try to keep the number of existing spaces the same. And when you were looking at the Santander Building, I don't know how many existing spaces are there now, but I would say that whatever Josh presented probably almost exactly matches the number of spaces that exist on the site now with a much, with a much smaller building. And then when it comes to the former, I call it the Jessen Building, the Rockland Trust Building, you know, I think the topography of that building does lend itself to potentially, I won't even call it an underground parking garage, but more like a walkout basement kind of a situation, where you could drive in and there could be parking in the back or underneath that building that, and then you could build something on the top of it. And although I, I'd want to see a little bit more about the number of stories, to me, that building is somewhat isolated enough that if you pulled it back from the San Agatha's roadside of, of, you know, it's a crazy intersection anyway, you could potentially get a larger building there, because I think you would get less pushback because it's not as close to the residents as, as other, other things. And then the energy code, just quickly in my brain, as I know we keep talking about it, Milton already has the stretch energy code adopted, I believe. And I know we're now proposing to adopt some additional energy requirements, which I think is great. But I don't understand how that would be above and beyond what's kind of already required by the energy code we have and the energy and what the Commonwealth has kind of dictated needs to happen. I, I felt that the, some of the questions at the forum were a little confusing. And I don't think people understood some of them. And I said that it would have made it easier if there was a QR code on the questionnaire. I think it would have been easier for people to kind of log into the, to the website. You know, we have residents from the age of, you know, very young to very old, and technology is always challenging for them. And then I guess the other thing that's just concerning to me is that the other zoning changes that have been proposed in town already kind of mirror what the original Barrett Report and what was presented to us in, in November was. So, and I'm seeing this presentation, and it kind of takes a slightly different direction, but they're in direct conflict with each other in my mind. If one gets adopted, then, then some of these districts automatically change, so. And then the Milton Village is different than East Milton, you know, and I think it's, I think it creates diversity. And I, again, you guys kind of talked about this, is, is they're not the same and they shouldn't be treated the same. And I think it's important that they be different. And, you know, again, I'll just, although I don't like the density of Brookline, the villages in Brookline are all very different from each other, right? And, and to me, that's the, the unique aspect of the difference between East Milton and, and, and the Village. So I, I think that's all I really want to say, I appreciate you listening to me, and I look forward to the public forum.
Great, Joe, thank you very much, great comments. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else, Josh, that you're seeing with a hand up?
No.
Okay. Okay, great, then thank you, I don't know, Josh, if you have a, we can say good evening. Okay, thanks for coming. Bye-bye, bye, thanks. All right, so we can now move on to our, jumping back to our, our new business. We just wanted to put this on the agenda. I was getting questions and people, and it, obviously, when we're looking at what we require a building as far as sustainability, Josh, you've been working on this, the municipal opt-in specialized energy code, and it's almost 10, I don't want to go too far in depth, but do you want to, just sort of maybe walk us through sort of an overview? And, and are you doing a public presentation on this for the residents to learn more about what, what we're doing?
Thank you, Meredith. And I'm happy to not run through all 16 slides that I prepared for you. I think we're a little bit late in the evening for that. But, but to that question, we haven't set a date for a sort of specialized code, specific public forum. It's, it's pretty dependent on Commissioner Hu's availability. And since he travels from out of state, it's, it's a little bit tricky, especially since we're only sort of two weeks out from it being put onto the warrant. So we're expecting that to be more likely to be in April than in the very near future, to give folks sort of more relevance as it's closer to town meeting. But we've, we've also been in conversations with Sustainable Milton, who seem to be very intent on having additional public forums and sort of information sessions. So I, I don't have much doubt in the ability for this to be telegraphed, part and wide.
Great.
But if you'd like, I, I'd be happy to share just one of the, the slides, which is, which is the one slide I shared with the select board at their meeting the other week, which I think provides a pretty clear, generalized overview of the difference between a stretch code and a specialized code and what it means for different types of buildings. And then happy to answer any questions. But just wanted to, especially given Joe's comment earlier, clarify what the specialized code is and how it's different from the stretch code. The stretch code, we are already a stretch code community, we have been for many, many years, since 2011. But every handful of years on a regular cadence, that stretch code is updated. The most recent update to the stretch code added a number of sort of new requirements, a more aggressive HERS rating, which basically sets the efficiency level compared to a normal building. So, so here you can see HERS 45 or HERS 42. That means a 45% energy use of a sort of standard building, and the standard building would be at HERS 100. So these are, you know, more than 52% more efficient, which is really exciting. The specialized code for a lot of small buildings is the same for that. The specialized code maintains all of the regulations in the stretch code and then adds in additional requirements for new construction. And I specify new construction because the stretch code, as part of its update, was expanded to include major renovations and additions. Generally, those over 1,000 square feet. So, so it expands the sort of application of that stretch code, but that does not apply to the specialized code. Specialized code is just for new construction. You can see in these sort of yellowier boxes what sort of changes with the specialized code. And that's typically for large construction, adding passive house requirements or HERS zero, effectively zero net energy. And then requiring any building that is mixed fuel, where there's combustion that happens on-site, to be pre-wired for electrification so that a, the next tenant of that home, the next owner, would be fully able to electrify their home should they wish to. In, in those cases as well, there's required solar shade permitting. If you're surrounded by trees, that requirement doesn't require you to chop down trees to add solar. So, so this is a sort of handy generalized guide, but there are a bunch of other sort of relative things to incentives and financial structures that are in place to incentivize this, applications for EV parking, and sort of how this ties to some of the climate goals that the town has set. But I just wanted to give this as a general overview.
That's great, thank you.
And welcome any questions.
So are we thinking about whether this is something that we will take a position on for town meeting? Because this is going to be on the May warrant, right?
Yeah. I don't know that we need to take a position on it, but I, I feel like I just want to be informed on it. And when we're asked questions, that we are able to answer them.
Okay. So I think one thing that, when we looked at like sustainability requirements in zoning, they might include some things with regard, that would be sort of complimentary, let's say, to the, this code because energy efficiency and renewable energy. But some of the other things that we look at, let's say stormwater management and so forth, is not covered in the stretch code, right? So it's purely on the energy side. So I just wanted to kind of, if we were kind of think about how this interfaces with zoning, I do think it's something that we'll want to... zoning, I do think it's something that we'll want to think about because, you know, this is a code that goes into effect at the building permit stage, and like where we're looking at projects at the zoning stage is before the building permit. So, it would just be good to sort of think through, you know, how we might think about the zoning policies if this does pass, for example, right? So, those are my, and one other thing I'll say is I've had an all-electric house for over 25 years. Heat pumps, on-demand electric hot water, induction stove, electric vehicle, electric dryer, and so it all works well. I think that's where the state is going with this in terms of the all-electric and really sort of having incentives more for all-electric than mixed fuel. Josh, you can correct me if you disagree with what I'm saying.
Not at all. I agree.
And what I found as an architect, having to utilize these codes, is that any time the code is updated, there's a little bit of a curve to having it becoming the sort of standard practice. And I, this is definitely the standard practice in the commercial construction world because, and I think on the residential side, on the specialized, given that it's new construction of this size home, it's not going to affect, you know, a lot of construction on the, it doesn't affect the additions and renovations and smaller homes. And so, again, for those who are going to be interested in this, I'd look forward to the forum that they're going to do that really goes out to more explanation.
Good. Thank you, Josh. Yeah, we'll look forward to just keep us posted on when that forum is so we can just understand it, because I'm still learning a lot about that, so I'm sure. The rest of the residents are too.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a good segue into our committees, but, you know, at my business, we have all-electric, and it is a little bit challenging because my main retail store was not designed or insulated to be all-electric. So, it is very challenging in the winter for me to stay warm. So, sometimes going all-electric, you know, without designing from the beginning, it's hard. It's, you know, I have to supplement my heat with more electric, so the cost is, you know, it's really kind of expensive. So, I, really what I need to do is go in and re-insulate, and, but, you know, my building is a barn-like structure, and so my concern is just always to the residents, and I agree with the new build at 4,000 square feet. I don't think cost necessarily would be a factor, but here in Milton, you know, we have a lot of historic houses, and they'll get, like even my house is less than, you know, my house is like 1,800 square feet, it's an 1840s house, and if I ever wanted to do something in addition, it would just be really expensive for us because then I would have to go and make the whole house, my understanding, to come up to meet this code.
Yeah, depends.
So, that's my hesitation a little bit, but, you know, just to go into it, I am the planning board's representative to the Climate Action Committee, and, you know, it's a new committee that the selectmen put together last year. And I've always said that Milton has really smart people, and I think they're all on this committee. And, you know, it's a great collection of residents from all over town and different age groups and different backgrounds, and, you know, it's been a learning experience. We meet once a month, the third Thursday of every month, and I give our chair lots of credit because she keeps us to 90 minutes. She runs a tight meeting, and, you know, it's just really, really smart people who have so much knowledge, you know, in the energy field. So, we are looking at creating a new, you know, climate action plan for the town, and their spreadsheet reminds me of your master plan implementation committee spreadsheet. And so, the committee's focused on energy in buildings, transportation and mobility, waste, governance and leadership, and conservation and land use. So, I am sort of charged with the conservation component of it. My partner on that is Ron Israel, and he drew the stick of having me as a partner. And so, he has done most of the work for us for the past couple months, and we're focusing on looking at all the conservation land and the blue hills, and so I would like to sort of expand it, expand it into other properties in town. My belief is the first step to help with climate change is to stop it from happening, and I'm all more for preservation than mitigation. And, you know, the UN has declared this decade as the decade of ecosystem restoration, and so, you know, the forests, you know, are the lungs of our earth, and we need our forests and our open space to clean our air. So, I'm focused on that part of it, and the other members are all focused on other aspects of it. Josh has been a great resource to the committee, as well as Jack Turner from the engineering department. So, eventually, we're going to start looking at, you know, the governance and leadership and developing different initiatives, and we will be having public forums throughout. So, I'm not exactly sure when they're going to start, but it's a great committee. It's, you know, different residents in town that you don't normally see on committees, which I think is nice to have new voices. So, if anybody ever wants to listen in.
Are they in person or Zoom?
Both, right here.
Is there a schedule for when the report's to be done?
Yeah, they're getting there. So, we're still trying to compare and look at other towns' climate reports and what would work for us and what wouldn't work for us, so.
And is the specialized stretch code part of the recommendation?
So, that is, yeah, so we're still trying to figure out if the committee should be weighing in on things. We did have a presentation of the specialized stretch code. You know, I raised my same concerns. I'm always about the residents, and, you know, when we put more onerous requirements, the cost of things go up, and we're always afraid of the housing costs in Milton, and my fear is sometimes if we are, you know, we make things too hard for people, we're more expensive for people, we're leaving people out. So, you know, I'm all about solar, I'm all about trees.
So, one thing about the new energy code in terms of how much insulation's required, the air sealing and so forth, is that they're pretty tight, and the need for heating and cooling is reduced, and so the operating costs are to help offset, you know, what might be an initial slightly higher expense, but then also there's the grant funding. So, I think that presentation, you know, those presentations will be helpful that way because the state has looked at that. And as one of the things that I, you know, being, as I said before, when house wrap was first required, people thought, oh, you know, this air barrier, what's this air barrier, what's all this stuff? And it's just standard practice now. And I think, you know, we're going to end up with sort of that continuous insulation and a few other things that are common in the commercial now, making their way into the residential and become standard practice too.
And so, that's one of the things I said, because, you know, the committee members are, you know, they're familiar, like you, they're familiar because that's what they do professionally. And I said what would be helpful is if we put together, you know, a talk for the residents so I would know where to go to get help or some direction. So, you know, see what grant funding is out there, what loans are out there for the average resident. The average resident doesn't know where to begin.
Yeah, it's interesting too, the subcontractors, like on the heat pump side, they know where, you know, how to apply for the grant funding or the rebates. Yeah. So, they're, but having a sort of one-stop assistance office kind of, if you will, would be helpful.
I love that idea.
Yeah, and just, you know, my other main overarching question is, we haven't really voted on anything. So, you know, what, as your member on this committee, do you want me to come back before taking a vote? Or what's the process? Because I represent you guys, and I don't want to take a vote on a personal decision because maybe I might say, oh, it's too expensive for me personally. I would feel more comfortable with representing you, but I don't know the correct process.
Well, I mean, as far as the plan itself, you know, I'm comfortable with you just providing us with updates, and, you know, if there's a particular meeting that we should watch to get more information, I'm fine with that because it's, you know, the committees that we serve on, it would be a lot for us to have to go back and get consensus amongst all board members for every decision.
You wouldn't want to delay a vote also, right? If they're voting, you kind of have to make the call.
And I think ultimately, it's going to have to go to town meeting. So, it would be a step in that process, but keeping us updated on where it is in that process. So, if we are asked that we can, you know, address questions, and if we have applicants who are doing multifamily housing, we, you know, we can refer to the number of required EV chargers, so.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great committee, and, you know, join in anytime if you want to spend another day, another Thursday in a meeting.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, the next meeting is next Thursday at 6:00 in the library, if anyone's interested.
Wow.
And Josh will be at a meeting next Monday with the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well.
Good.
And in the Thursday meeting as well. My wife does not appreciate my schedule.
Oh. So, segueing, I know you said you weren't sure if you were going to be ready for a committee update.
Yeah, I'll just mention on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we've been talking about the major categories in the plan and bringing, inviting other committee members or interested entities like Sustainable Milton to speak to us about what their thoughts are about. We kind of brief them on what's in the plan and the topic, and then whether they feel as if the plan should be updated because we're getting to that 10-year mark. So, we're getting to a point where we want to present our recommendations to the planning board, to the select board, and to town meeting as required by our charge, and whether the plan should be updated. And so, we've been working on that for a while in terms of spreadsheets that you mentioned, may, you know, sort of tracking every recommendation in the plan itself, but then more broadly, sort of some topics that aren't really addressed in very much detail in the plan. And then, on a more specific topic, we've been working with the library on whether there can be some additional parking in this general area. It's one of the things recommended in the master plan, it's something the library's been working on for a long time. And so, we're getting to a point where we're going to give a briefing to the select board because it's in select board jurisdiction at the end of the month, I believe, I'll give that, and then I'll, from there, we'll get some direction from them about next steps with that planning process, and so then I'll come back and give an update on that. So, that's kind of the general.
When will you give that update out?
I can let you know for sure. I have to see if it's on the agenda for the select board because I had spoken to them about, I think it would be the second meeting of the month for them. So, they meet on Tuesdays, is it?
Yeah, their schedule's been a little, I don't think they're meeting till.
I think it's the 27th.
27th.
And because it's a joint, we appoint residents too, don't we? Don't we point?
The MPIC committee, yeah.
The MPIC, so it's not just Cheryl representing the planning board like it is me on this, but we actually appoint the other residents. So, do you have to do a reporting to us or no? I don't know what the charge is.
I think it's a joint now that I just give a agenda.
I think you're supposed to be reporting to both select board, and there may be certain things that the select board has jurisdiction over, but the idea.
Well, yeah, the reporting is definitely to both, but in terms of next steps on something, let me use, for example, like Milton Village, where we did study work with Josh on the landing. So, we did a, they did a report, and then we did a letter that accompanied the report. We turned that over to the select board because it was sort of next steps followed in their hands. And then, on the zoning, we did the work with MAPC, we did again some more cover letter and handed it off to the planning board because it was sort of planning board next work. But that's more kind of specific to the task, the broader kind of overview of updates is what we're required to do to both boards and to town meeting. So, that, the reason they got specifically targeted out for one thing was the topic that we were helping with. We were asked to help with the Milton landing, we were asked to help with the library parking, so that's why we did those.
Now, that we have this Climate Action Committee, would you have them come and report to you over Sustainable Milton?
In fact, Josh, you know, staffs the MPIC too, and we talked about that. We did talk about that, yeah.
Because it's pretty good because the school committee has a representation, a representative on it, so Conservation Commission, so it's kind of a good mix of all the boards having.
So, given where you are with it, I don't know if we were quite, we didn't think we were quite ready, but we're not going to, I mean, we've, Monday, it'll be open space and recreation as the topic, that's the last major topic. Then, I've asked the people who, committee member has taken each one of these topics, invited folks in and kind of led that discussion, and then I'm asking each one to prepare a summary. So, we're getting ready to do our summaries, but Josh and I spoke after the last meeting about how this could come in still before we're done, because our charge is at the end of the year. The other thing is, you know, we'll have to make a recommendation whether we think it should continue beyond 10 years, and the other piece was, as I said, whether it should be updated. The committee's talked about not a full rewrite of the master plan, but some selected updates, and that could either come through a new committee or a sort of reconstituted with a new charge committee. And again, that would have to go through town meeting because it's a town meeting appoint, or a form.
Approved.
It was approved committee, right, at town meeting. So, on the next one, on the CPC, you want me to keep going on CPC? And Julia staffs that, so Julia, you can jump in. Actually, Josh, did you want to add anything on the MPIC?
I don't think there's anything additional to add, y'all being here, if, just to continue my role of telling you where your meetings are in case anyone wants to be a guest, but that's about it.
All right. So, and Josh is going to help write the sustainability piece, so he's more than informed on the Climate Action Committee's work, right? All right. So, then, on the CPC, there'll be an article for the May town meeting. There were a number of applications for total amount of funding, more than what we had available to fund. So, it was unlike last year when Rich was on, where they had, you know, enough money to fund everything at the full request. So, there was some back and forth with the applicants on the funding amounts. So there was some back and forth on the, with the applicants on the funding amounts. So the 13 included one for affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Trust, but Winter Valley had applied for their project. Remember, it's all affordable senior. So the Affordable Housing Trust is working with Winter Valley.
Oh, good.
And they'll work out the, the funding that way. So that, the, in the category of historic preservation, there are five. Really interesting, I think you'd find the Milton Cemetery, the restoration of the headstones.
Yeah.
We did a tour. That was really actually pretty interesting, the, well, they're all interesting. The Forbes House Museum, the preservation of the carriage house and the barn. A study for the windows of the Milton Art Center. At first, they wanted, their application was for some repairs, but we had suggested that they do a study first of the, sort of an assessment of the windows because it's a historic building. So that's what they're doing. And then the fence at the Blue Hills Observatory, the work that the DCR has done on the building didn't include the fence. And then under open space, there's a number of them, including the Andrews Park.
Water fountain?
Water fountain is one.
He's the model, that's right.
There's also some fencing there as well. There's the basketball court right back here, some improvements to that. A feasibility study for the development of a pine tree brook walk, which will run around the entirety of the brook. The Kelly Field adding dugouts. Kelly Field is where softball and baseball played there, right? A study, including, I believe, a survey of the Napanza Estuary, which, you know, was going to be on the, got removed from this, the last town meeting. That's really fascinating, too. An extension of Pope's Pond Trail, so they can make its way around the pond. And then an accessibility study for that. So aren't those all great?
That's great.
Yeah, and so it's a total funding of just over $1 million, roughly equal to the three, a little bit less for the historic preservation.
Are any of them actual projects instead of just studying? Like the basketball court, we need to study that, can't we just fix it?
No, that's not study. That was not study.
Yeah, so it would just be, it would be good to like...
The study is the estuary and the windows.
Yeah.
They're just a fund project.
But the Peverly Playground has been added.
Yeah, we're adding, right. So we have a new, there was some miscommunication, and they did initial application at the Peverly Playground. They didn't submit the final, so there, we have a meeting coming up where that'll be considered. And they, just one thing, and the police lockup at Milton Landing requested funding, but the, the committee, again, you know, the decisions had to be made, and there hadn't been any progress with the repairs yet from last, the last round. So it was really, we tried to make sure that any second application was making progress. And, you know, we had to make a decision someplace, and so that's where that went. So town meeting, we'll take a vote on these, and we'll see where Peverly Park comes out. So that's that.
Fantastic. And I have been open space and recreation, but I, Tim, you sort of gave that update on what's happening with that, which is really exciting to, and Tim has been, you know, obviously been digging in, but that was one of the questions, you know, when I was talking to John Kieran, and I said, how do we know what conservation land is, you know, what open space is town-owned, what is in conservation restrictions? And there's been a lot of really great areas, so I just thank Tim for really digging into some of these deeds and sort of the history of some of these open space, that we haven't really known what is protected, what's not protected, what's developable, you know, just on so many levels that are important. So thank you, Tim, for your work on that. And we have great consulting.
We'll be getting back into a more kind of public-facing mode as we kind of start to wrap up the plan soon. So I know the committee hasn't met in a little bit, but we'll probably be reconvening in the near future.
Great.
Capital Asset Planning Committee?
How is that?
It's a lot of numbers. And this, the first, the first meeting I was able to go to was this past one where they just started discussing the budget. Turns out we're in the red, $3.8 million for 2024, but I think Nick Milano's going to look into either having a little bit more debt or working some magic and trying to get us in the black again. It was a quick meeting. And that's, that's that.
Do you have a list of the capital requests?
Oh, yeah, I've got a, I don't know, nine-page spreadsheet or something of what everybody wants, and it's just, I don't know what it all means, to be honest with you.
There's a list, and then it sort of gets narrowed and narrowed and narrowed.
I think that's at the next meeting. We're going to dive into all this.
So, to see what, yeah.
Yeah. I honestly don't know. Okay, so the cemetery wants a pickup truck, DPW wants two F-250s, two F-550s, and so I guess it's just replacement of trucks or buying new trucks. All department requests. So I don't really know what more to report than that.
That's great. Thank you for being our representative.
Well, yeah, I've got to learn, I've got to learn a little more.
As it gets narrowed down, it is interesting to see.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, you know, this, I think one year there was like field replacements, you know? And so it'll be nice to know what kind of categories it gets a little down to.
Gotcha, okay.
I just wanted to mention that town reports are due on February 10th, or, just as a reminder.
Right, thank you, yes.
As far as the planning board report, you're going to draft that?
That was something that actually, yeah, Tim and Josh helped to draft last year. And we haven't even had a chance to talk about that, but we'll, we'll determine that. So, yeah, we'll take on, yeah, getting that done. I was actually looking through all the things that we've done, and we've, we've actually accomplished a lot. We don't feel like it all the time, and we have a lot of really long meetings, but we've had a lot of, we've done a lot of really good things, so.
I just brought it up because some committees have...
And subcommittees, too, if, yeah, you're chairing, yeah. Do you submit one for MPIC, too?
Yes, we're, sometimes we've used that as the report, you know, that gets distributed. I usually prepare a draft, which I ask the committee to take a look at. So we'll do that on Monday.
Yep, okay, good, thank you, that's good.
And then we'll submit it after that meeting.
Exactly. So then, just the only other thing, so next item we have is the discussion of the historic preservation plan. And this is just something that really came out of when we were, when we were looking, you know, ourselves at other, what other towns were doing, especially around the MBTA communities, and we were looking at people who, towns that had, and doing overlay zoning, towns that had preservation plans. And I was surprised in listening to some of the Zoom meetings, many towns that were on talked about how great it was that they did have a preservation plan. And I feel like we have, we've, we talk about historic preservation in Milton, and we now have the CPC funds, but we don't have a plan for how they're going to be allocated. So this is something that I had brought up at another meeting. Tim brought, or actually provided, Julia provided, just a couple of copies of what other towns have done. And this is sort of...
Some light reading thing.
Some light reading, no. But they're, they're more lengthy than others. There's different origins of the grants. This is Sudbury. It was interesting, both Sudbury and Beverly use the same consultant, this heritage strategies. And so Tim was able to, I haven't read through these, but the whole idea is that, just like any of our other plans, our open space and recreation plan, our master plan, this is something that I think Milton could really, could really use to say, you know, what do we prioritize, whether it's our, even our fire stations, if, you know, some of our older fire stations should, we had, you know, the historical commission would always talk about, you know, we need to preserve these old buildings because if, if we're not maintaining them, if we aren't prioritizing, and this might be a way that we, we sort of set a priority and really an awareness. Because I, at one point, the town facilities manager didn't even know that Milton owned the art center. And we kept saying, this is one of our, this is such a great asset, our P-Bet, and he didn't realize, so it was never on a maintenance plan.
And the lockup.
And the lockup at the landing. Yeah, and it's not been, you know, anything intentional, but things, the, you know, across the street, the Powderhouse, that's a really, that was moved to that site from the Lamb property, that was moved. That's really, you know, that was an old, you know, Powderhouse during the Revolutionary War. People drive by it every day, but these little assets that we have, you know, that we could compile, sort of a plan on how we preserve these, these things. And Tim, we had talked, we had talked about maybe even having, you know, a student, having an intern to sort of study who the consultants are, what other towns were, were used in, used in other towns. And there are, you know, certainly a variety of ways that we could go about this, but possibly this could be something that we could partially fund, but MPIC could partially fund, because I know part of what your recommendation is, is a preserve, is historic preservation, and looking at CPC funds, that maybe we apply for a grant from the planning board to the CPC to, to, to fund doing a historic preservation plan. And we know these things take a while, so I thought it might be good to get it sort of into the queue and something that I think we're, we're missing. And as we finish some of our other plans, we can maybe look at setting up a committee to initiate this. Tim, do you want to?
Do you have an idea how much a consultant would cost to develop a plan, Tim?
I'll, I'll kind of circle back on that. You know, these are kind of, you know, there's a lot of different towns that have historic preservation plans of various vintages. I tried to kind of pull up some of the more contemporary ones. So I think, you know, follow-up would be to reach out to some of these towns and just kind of get an idea of how much, how much these cost. I mean, if you look at some of these, I mean, I just happened to pull up the Sudbury one. I mean, this is, you know, this is a weighty document, you know, and a lot of it involves kind of a lot of inventory work, a lot of historical research and everything. So, you know, I can imagine, you know, there's, there's probably a spectrum of cost for these types of things. But I, I think it's, it's actually, you know, I'm, as a planner, you know, very interested in kind of getting all of our thinking in one place so that everyone's kind of rowing in the right direction. And I think, you know, you see this through, you know, the open space planning effort, obviously, the master plan. You know, Milton as a town, you know, extremely cognizant and very kind of interested in preserving its history, but in terms of the mechanisms that we've availed ourselves of, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge, you know? Obviously, we've got demolition delay, you know, we've kind of, you know, enacted preservation requirements through various pieces of zoning. But in terms of a lot of the tools that are available, we're still, you know, not wielding them as effectively as we could. You know, we'll hopefully soon have a local historic district, you know, the first that we've ever had in Milton Village, and hopefully, you know, we kind of move on to other historic districts. But I think this is the type of thing that, you know, especially, I think, you know, the idea of having CPC funding really kind of opens up a lot of doors that were previously closed. And I think, you know, in the same way that the open space plan can be a tool for the CPC committee to kind of say like, okay, here's how we're going to prioritize, you know, funding opportunities, you know, based on all our shared goals and values around open space, a historic preservation plan could be a tremendous help to that committee in terms of, you know, prioritizing, you know, where things go, town, you know, resources in terms of the lockup and, and, you know, well, the Kidder Library is not ours anymore, but the other historic buildings that we own, you know, understand anything, what condition they're in and kind of what they need. So I think it's a really great, you know, idea to start pursuing. And I think, you know, to merit, merit this point, you know, this isn't 100% in the planning board's wheelhouse, but I think as an instigator of this and kind of bringing together everyone who needs to be brought together in terms of kind of, you know, sharing load from a funding and a staffing perspective, I think this is definitely something we can start looking at. So, you know, step one is kind of ascertaining, you know, what kind of the spectrum of costs would be. And then we can kind of start to figure out, you know, maybe, you know, thinking about a funding strategy, you know, over the course of the next, you know, months and a year. And then, you know, maybe starting to put together a scope of work. So I think, you know, definitely take a look at the documents that I provided. No need to read them cover to cover, although I'm sure they're very interesting. There's a lot of really great history throughout our Commonwealth, as we all know. But just kind of get an idea for what kind of the universe of possibilities are in terms of inventorying and action planning and some of the implementation, implementation tools that these, these plans suggest. And, and, you know, we can start to bring together the folks, you know, historical commission obviously is going to want to have a role in this. You know, the extent, as Mary said, the master plan committee, you know, puts a priority on historic preservation, and this may be something to kind of work into, you know, the next step for, for the master plan. And, and, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, you all should take, take a good look at it.
That's great. And I was looking at, looking through this, and we already have a lot of this information. This would be, it's, it talks about scenic roadways in here, all the surveys of historic properties and districts. We have so much of that, and Milton is so fortunate that so many of our properties in town have been surveyed for Mass Historical. So a lot of it's through, that we could just feed into one document, which, like Tim said, we have things in different places, and people say, what are our scenic roadways? What are these, you know, what is being preserved? And we have things in different places. So I think this is, could be really great for, for Milton to have it all in one place, so.
Cool.
Good? Great. So that covers that item, and then we can go to our old business. We had the East Milton zoning update with MAPC, which was great. And then MBTA community zoning discussion. Tim, do you want to just update us on the memo you sent out on the economic feasibility
Yeah, so I sent along the scope of work that the board settled on at a recent meeting back to MAPC, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of things that we're interested in in pursuing, you know, relative to affordable housing and inclusionary zoning, you know, through MBTA communities and potentially in other elements of our zoning. But the, the feedback that we got back from MAPC was, you know, effectively, there is a super basic job that they can do, which is, which is effectively, you know, following the state's guidelines for, this is what we want to see out of an economic feasibility analysis, for the specific purpose of increasing the affordability percentage in your 3A zoning from 10% to greater than 10%. You know, and, and that's something that, you know, again, is kind of the, the basic package, $15,000 to $20,000 budget. You know, the more that is added on to that in terms of going beyond, you know, what is, you know, again, a simple, you know, desktop exercise, I mean, it's not, it's not that simple, but it's, it's straightforward, into other things in terms of exploring deeper affordability and exploring different methods of, you know, extracting affordable housing, whether it's through off-site units or in-loop payments or fractional payments. You know, this goes from analysis to policymaking, which, you know, from, from, from the consultant's end, whether it's MAPC or somebody else, involves more interaction with the planning board, potentially more interaction with the public, you know, more analysis, more kind of comparison to other communities, and that just adds up in terms of costs. And so, you know, I forwarded the email from MAPC, and they kind of, you know, gave their best, you know, their best guess as to sort of, you know, fulfilling that scope would be kind of closer to, you know, the $30,000 to $40,000 range, rather than sort of the $15,000 to $20,000, which I think was the target, you know, for, you know, for sort of a not-to-exceed price. So that's kind of where we are. I think that you're probably not going to get a better deal, you know, by, by sort of bidding this thing out. this thing out. This is kind of consistent with, you know, what I've seen for other types of projects of similar scope. And I think, given, you know, what we heard from town meeting, what we're hearing, you know, in the conversation around the ballot question, around, you know, people's dissatisfaction with the affordability that's already in Article 1, I think the best idea right now is to just sort of go with the thing that is going to get us an increased percentage, you know, in that zoning, which I think was sort of the primary concern that we heard, you know, both at town meeting and then afterwards about it. Not to say that the other things aren't important, but the other things are not necessarily the highest priorities that we heard. And also, I think being cognizant of a number of other budgetary priorities that the board has, you know, not just around MBTA communities, but around other things that the board wants to do. I think if we're talking about, you know, studying traffic impacts, you know, that's going to come, you know, come down to some budget. If we're going to be talking about, you know, going above and beyond on either site plan approval or design guidelines, that, you know, is another potential cost. And so I think, you know, putting a certain number of eggs into this basket that kind of achieve the highest priority goal and then kind of, you know, keeping our powder dry for future improvements, I think would be the way to go. Obviously, it's up to the board, you know, it's your budget. But this is kind of what we heard from M-A-P-C. I think it's kind of consistent with other, you know, similar projects that we've seen. And I think, you know, again, you know, that package that will sort of get us the product that we can give to the state to justify a greater percentage, I think should probably be the board's highest priority.
Well, one thing I've seen, written in comments and heard a lot, is that people say, we're going to go backwards with this zoning because we, some of it is not triggering affordability if it's less than 10 units. So I really feel as if the contribution component of this is really important. And also, if we can get more than 15%, it would help that offset the projects that don't trigger it. So I understand what you're saying in terms of other priorities. It doesn't look like they can have this ready for May, even in the slimmed-down version. As much interest as there is in this, I would like to see the full scope. And if we can get it for 30 rather than 40 and have it ready for a fall town meeting, that's kind of where I'm thinking we should go.
I mean, one thing to keep in mind, you know, just relative to the timeline, is, you know, and we had kind of talked about this, there'd been, you know, a potential proposed amendment, you know, in December to Article 1. You know, you can, you know, town meeting can pass an amendment that says, you know, we're going to set, you know, the affordability of 15%, you know, pending, you know, a kind of a satisfactory analysis that's approved by HLC. You know, and then that analysis can come when it comes. And, you know, one thing that we have heard from M-A-P-C, just kind of, you know, based on their experience, looking at similar towns to Milton and other analyses that they've done, is that, you know, it's not a guarantee, but it's close to a guarantee, you know, 15% will probably pencil out. So I think that's something that you can probably bring to town meeting with confidence. So just, you know, relative to the timeline, I think that, you know, that shouldn't necessarily be a holdup to an annual town meeting. If there are other things that you want to include and you want to do it all in one shot, then that's another, that's another question entirely. But just, you know, relative to that, kind of relatively circumscribed, you know, do we want to increase the percentage? You know, you can bring that to town meeting and have the analysis follow-up, you know, relatively shortly thereafter.
So I think it's important also to have the trigger be eight units if it's possible. So if you're saying that we can have an amendment ready for May that goes to 15% with a trigger at eight and includes a financial contribution for less than eight, and we follow it with the backup, then I'm fine. But I don't know what the financial contribution number needs to be. So I don't know how we determine that. I think I was, I heard in a conversation with Ned Corcoran recently that he was, had a client and was doing a project in another community in Massachusetts where there was a contribution required for a subdivision. And I don't remember what that number is, but if there is a way, Tim, has anyone else been doing this that we could draw from? Like, has Lexington done it or any other Arlington or?
I thought Newton had a contribution.
We can look into it. I mean, one thing that we've heard from HLC, who's been kind of reviewing these economic feasibility analyses, is, you know, the advice that we got from them is, you know, getting anything, anything that's below eight units, and eight units is kind of right on the line. You know, if you're asking anything of a project that's less than that, it's, you know, it may technically pencil, but they're going to look very, very, very closely at that with a great deal of scrutiny, you know, because it really creates such razor-thin margins that a lot of people will not even look at a project like that. You know, you really do need to kind of keep in mind, you know, that it's, these percentages sound like they're small, and, you know, an eight-unit project sounds like it's big for town of Milton. But, you know, these kind of upfront contributions, you know, whether it's a unit or whether it's money, you know, really do make the difference between a project happening or not happening. So, you know.
So let's think about it this way. If you had a 10-unit project, and I know from the Hendrys that, I think that Delta, they could sell a condo there for $250,000 for an affordable, and let's say 700 for market rate, or 750 for easy math. You have a $500,000 differential for 10 units, right? So now, at 10 units, I'm going to have to provide one, so my contribution is $500,000. So if I, I'm not saying anywhere close to that is what we want to look at, but if you just say you have a three-unit, and let's say you said, okay, what kind of percentage can I extrapolate from a 10-unit? You know, that's having to contribute 500,000 down to a three-unit. Is it 10% of that amount? You know, so is it 5,000? Is it 10,000? I mean, this is, I think that we should be able to arrive at a number. I think we arrived at a number for that subdivision off of Highland Marine Way, I think it's called. We arrived at a number there for a contribution for that subdivision as a cluster development. I don't remember what that number is. Tim, were you here for that?
It's like 50,000 bucks.
How much?
50.
50,000.
50? And that was for seven units? So I don't know. Let's say, ask M-A-P-C, can they evaluate $10,000 for a contribution for something less than eight units? I'm just throwing a number out. I'm not just trying to.
Yeah, so I was thinking that, you know, I like percentages better than dollar amounts because then it reflects the market of the day. So the contribution I was sort of thinking about would be a percentage of the sales price. So you're allowing a developer to make a maximum profit on, you know, two of those units. But on the third unit, maybe it's a percentage of the sale price. So if he sells it or she sells it for more, then the contribution is more.
So a sliding scale.
Right, right. And then back to the number of units. I thought you had said that Boston is seven.
But Tim said that HLC has indicated they won't go less.
They like eight.
Right. So that's why my frustration is, like, and I thought Boston was 17% affordable. So my frustration is, how come we're not matching Boston? I know what, like, HLC should be treating the suburbs, you know, better than they're treating Boston.
They don't have any say in Boston, though. It's just.
I know, I know. So this is my whole problem with MBTA zoning. You know, Boston is exempt. Boston created this whole housing issue in my mind. They built all these life science buildings, and they displaced workers and converted buildings, and they didn't take care of their employees, and they're putting the burden on the towns. So I think that we should be able to do, the towns should be able to do what Boston is doing. You know, I think we should push back a little bit. And I think that what's going to happen is if the suburbs are less stringent or less strict, developers are going to come to the suburbs and build, rather than building in Boston.
Well, that, I think we all agreed that we wanted to get as high a percentage as possible. It's a question of what HLC will accept. And, you know, to me, seven units versus eight. The trigger is, I think in Boston, is, I think, over seven units. So it's the eighth unit that triggers it. So we might be talking about the same thing, if we're talking about the eighth unit triggering it. So then, then the question is 15% versus 17%? If we have, if we can get to putting 15% in here, there's nothing to hold us back from trying for 17% later, right?
Yeah, so that was going to be my question, too. So I really would like to try to get something to town meeting in May on the affordability. So I wouldn't want to delay. So I do.
So if we could draft something.
If we don't have to have the study done to have the vote, I'm fine with that. If it means we have to pick the percentage, then I would be okay with picking 15% for now. And an eight, the trigger being the eighth unit. And I would like to have something in there for a financial contribution. I just don't, I would like to have some basis for it from someplace.
Because just knowing the market rates, I think we would pencil out pretty similar to whatever Newton has come up with, Newton and Lexington, I think just on housing prices. So maybe we could see if they have a contribution on those.
And I just think that if a developer is able to sell a unit, you know, at a higher because they did a nicer job, and, you know, I don't want to hold back a developer, but they are able to profit more, so why?
To be a percentage of their profit, though, or their percentage?
Or their selling price.
There's many ways to hide profit. What about an average of all three units?
Sale price.
Would that be beneficial at all?
Well, the other thing, drawback, I was thinking, what if they don't sell and they just rent? They develop it and?
That's why you need something, which is, I think.
So it's a minimum, maybe it's a minimum of a?
Well, you could do an appraised value at that point.
I think it'd be worth seeing what other towns have done for this particular, for MBTA zoning. If somebody's done it, I think if it's past muster somewhere.
I mean, I feel like if you're selling a $750 condo, you know, and you have three of them, I don't know, a $50,000 contribution doesn't seem like quite enough.
Yeah, it sounded low.
Yeah, it just seemed low to me.
So, let's see.
Only because I'm comparing it to the half million that you mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, like, again, some people, developers will say, okay, I'm not going to do eight units because I'm losing 500. I'm going to do, you know, something, like, if you do that as a percentage, so if you do 15%, you know, times, so if you, like, the eighth, I guess the other thing we haven't talked about, which we did, you know, like in Milton Village, what do you do on a percentage basis? So, you know, I just did 10 units at 10%. That gives you one, right? But what if it's 12% and now you're at 1.2? What's the 1.2? Is it rounding down? Is it a contribution?
Always round out.
On Milton Village, we went up and down, so, you know, or do we do a contribution?
And if the market's a little soft, you know, I don't want to penalize the developer if he didn't, he didn't get the sales price he was hoping for, you know? So that's why I like a percentage, because it goes with what's actually happening on the ground.
And I think it was Lexington, but they had a sliding, they had it, and that's what we eventually would have. They would have a percentage for condominiums and a separate amount for rentals. They looked at both separately, like differently, for their contributions.
If we could have, take a look at that. That was, do we have that already, that policy?
I have, yeah, Tim printed it out for me. I have it.
So is that what you put in one of our folders, Tim?
It's probably in the folder.
I don't think that made it in the separation of rentals and condos.
That might have been.
Just the affordable component. I don't remember seeing that.
Now, we're actually growing the scope at this point, which is okay, but we'll be at 40.
I'll look at what I have.
It might actually be in an email now that I think about it.
Yeah, it's something that I printed up.
Oh, no, 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 it's from, it's in the January 11 folder, the Lexington Economic Feasibility Study.
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. So I guess what I would say in terms of direction for M-A-P-C, if we said we wanted to go with 15% and eight-unit and a contribution, that that would need to be what the scope is? And then we would have to come back later and try and deal with a higher percentage. So I guess if that can be done for 30,000, Tim, how much money do we have in the planning board budget for this fiscal year remaining?
I don't know if we've actually spent any planning board budget.
So we have 15, then?
Well, they wouldn't do it for the 15,000 to 20,000.
Yeah, they would do that for the 15 to 20.
Including what we just talked about?
That might be.
The contribution.
The contribution.
Yeah, 15 to 20, I mean, what do they do? That's a lot of money for.
All right, how about then?
Squeeze it for 20, have it in the contribution.
We could authorize up to 15, but maybe we authorize up to 20 if it includes the contribution.
And there's nowhere else we can get that money from, huh? It's got to come out of our budget?
There's still some 3A grant money.
There you go.
But the other thing to remember, Jim, we lose the money at the end of June if we don't use it.
Well, it goes back into free cash, right?
Yes, but we don't, we as the planning board doesn't.
Well, it's all right, but if we don't spend it, at least it goes back into the town.
Oh, sure.
If we use the grant money, I'd rather spend grant money than our money.
Right.
Right?
And most of it would cover that.
Okay.
But does that?
But we would also want Tim to advocate for his department because we know there's going to be a budget shortfall moving forward. So I would hate Nick Milano to say, oh, the planning board didn't use all of their money so they don't need it.
They only get 20 grand next year.
So I agree with you, Jim, that I don't like to spend money unnecessarily, but I would hope that Nick Milano would say, oh, the planning department has a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, we really need to keep their budget what it was. And they've been fiscally responsible through this challenging year, and so let's reward them.
And their penalty is no more money.
And I would say, I mean, regardless of.
Maggie's writing my presentation to the Warren Committee right now.
Yeah. But we will need more consultants and more.
We're going to, regardless of which way the vote goes next week, we're going to need to do work. And we're going to need technical assistance.
Yeah, that was my next concern.
So the grant money, I think, could go towards that or this. I mean.
So is that grant money, Tim?
Whatever's the easiest to get things moving.
But I think to get this done by May, I think this, yeah.
We're going to have to, we have this money really available to go from us through Tim. So if we can get this, if we need to do it from our budget to have it ready for May or shortly thereafter, since we can vote on it.
So, Tim, I think we start with the bare bones. We start with that, to get something to May. But we would like to have a pay-in.
And push for 17% and seven units. That's what I think.
I don't think seven, if we know that HLC says no to seven, I don't think we should push for it.
They didn't say no, they just don't like it. They'll scrutinize it more, right? But it doesn't mean they'll say no, does it?
Tim's the one who has to answer that.
Would they say no to it, or would they just scrutinize it a little bit more?
You know, just like a lot of things, they don't speak in absolutes when they offer this advice. But it was pretty clear to me, reading between the lines, that it would be a good idea to kind of stick to eight, you know, as kind of the threshold.
At 15%.
And honestly, like, a lot of. And, and honestly, like, a lot of that is kind of based on their experience with seeing, like, lower than eight just doesn't pencil. So, so that's kind of a lot of, kind of where they're coming from is, you know, what they've seen from these analyses so far is that people have tested it and, you know, and it doesn't, it doesn't usually work out. So that's kind of become a rule of thumb for them.
And what's the profit margin these developers are looking for?
They actually have to work with their lenders and it's probably like in the 20% range.
The interest rates, yeah.
So it's a 20%, so it's a 20% profit.
But that's not guaranteed to them.
Yeah, so 20% profit. And so by, like, how much would their profit be reduced by? What percentage would their profit-
Well, if you, if you look at it, if you said it's 500,000 for one unit, let's just say on a eight-unit project, you're, you're taking 40,000, is that right? No? All right.
With half a mill divided by eight? No, you're right, that's 40 grand. Half a mill divided by eight? It's 40 grand.
40,000 per unit, if you're doing that many, right? But that's at the, so if you're doing less and you're thinking-
So if you're doing a three, it'd be 120 grand, right?
Is that doable? So, like, I think of the smaller units.
Their 40,000 might be the number, then.
Yeah. Per unit or just on the third unit?
I think it's per unit.
Yeah. So that, so if you're developing a three family, it would be 120 grand contribution.
That's a lot, though, isn't it? Because your profit would be-
So that's like in your world, the three units?
Yeah.
You know, how would that be?
I think that's, I think that's a lot.
I have never developed and flipped a three unit. Yeah.
Well, if your construction costs are roughly 500,000 per unit, which I would guess, and they would sell for-
300 to 350 a square foot.
They would sell for, you know, on average. I mean, they're going higher, but it depends on the square footage. It depends on the size of the unit.
I mean, you have a, your land cost, your carrying cost, your-
Well, let's say you buy one for-
Interest rate.
Call it a million?
A single-family house, son.
Tear it down.
I think we shouldn't speculate.
I know, we need to do some math.
I know, because it's, it's, it's 11 o'clock and we're doing, so, Tim, maybe we could do some research and see what the contribution is from Lexington on theirs, because it was really broken out with rental contributions and condo contributions, and I would think we would align pretty similarly.
So what are we authorizing, then? Are we authorizing, Tim, to use planning board funds of up to 15? I don't know that.
No, that, we have that in the 3A. That's, Tim, do you want to clarify that?
Are we now using 3A funds or what?
We authorized 15,000 at our last meeting and the source, Tim?
I, I, I actually wasn't there. Josh, I think it was $15,000 from planning board.
It was from planning board.
That is correct.
But can we change that and make it, get the 3A money?
You do whatever you want.
But the question is, how quickly can you mobilize the 3A money?
So that, that is, it's easy peasy. That grant is like general purpose MBTA community's work. It's a refundable grant. We have an account set up already, so it's just a matter of, you know, signing a contract, getting a purchase order together, you know, paying invoices and then, you know, filing reimbursements. That's all, you know, it's, it becomes a matter of just setting it up with MAPC and then, you know, the, the amount of time it takes them to get a contract together. I think, you know, the thing, you know, this is, you know, just recognizing the reality, you know, what we're talking about is doing this evaluation based on the Article I districts and parameters. I will, I will hold off until Valentine's Day, you know, because if Article I is no longer a thing, then, you know, I, I think we'll have to figure out another strategy for this. But, so, you know, we'll, we'll get everything together. I'll correspond with, with MAPC about all of this, so we'll be ready to go, if we can go. But, you know, we won't, we won't pull any triggers until after the results of the, the election next week.
All right, and then I still would like to discuss, then, these are really broad ranges for these prices. You know, 10 grand difference here is, it's a pretty high percentage. And I still like the idea of looking at less than 80% AMI. I mean, we're getting 80% AMI in the 40Bs and nothing less. And we saw, like, at Winter Valley, they were able to get like 30% and 50% AMI. I just think that if we're going to wait until Tuesday to see, I think we should talk about this again, and I think we should ask MAPC to sharpen their pencil and think about this a little bit more and cut that range down. 15 to 25 is huge range. You know, 30 to 40 is a, is a big range. Because, you know, this is one of the, the things that I think that most people are also really concerned about, this, one of the main, I'm very concerned.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm very concerned. That's one of my biggest concerns. I just, my fear only is we're cutting it close time-wise, because they said it's a, you know, a few months is, was the turnaround was-
It was like three months.
Like, three months. So is there any way, Tim, you could talk to MAPC and at least they can put us in their queue? You know, we might not have the exact-
I think he's done that already, I think.
Yeah, so we might not have the exact language of the contract, but at least they know we're going to move forward some, with something, so we should be in their queue.
So here's the other thing. I think Meredith or Tim, you know, if you could speak to Nick Milano or Mike Zulis about reopening the warrant and having an article which would change the affordability requirement.
We already have a placeholder and I even, sorry, go ahead, Tim, you can-
I was going to say the same thing. They're expecting something from the planning board, so.
We haven't specified.
So we haven't drafted it. When do we have to draft it by?
I'll have to double check on that. I, I had a date written down. It was kind of a soft date, but I'll, I'll confirm with the town administrator about when that's necessary.
Okay.
Great.
So our next meeting, just in terms of when we can talk about this again, is in two weeks, so.
Yeah, on the 22nd.
It'll be just a week, a little plus after the vote. And I think if they have us in their queue, to your point, Maggie, then let's not rush on the final scope, right? I, I would just like to see if they can fine tune or sharpen their pencil on those numbers.
Is that possible, Tim? We can just revisit, like, a little bit more in detail or specific, those three things that we would be asking for? We would be asking for-
Yeah, we can, we can, we can certainly ask, and I'm sure they'll give us a little bit more clarity. They may have questions for the board. I mean, you know, the scope of work, you know, ask for specific things, but, you know, they may, if, if, if we want specificity in kind of budgeting, they may have questions for the board, you know, in which case, you know, there may be a little bit of back and forth there. But I will get in contact with them and kind of see, you know, how, how, how much detail they can pin down on those various kind of ranges of budget.
And we, we were asking them also to draft the language, right, Tim? Part of that was drafting the language?
I'd have, I'd have to, I'd have to double check, but, but that's, you know, that's one of the expenses is, you know, it's, it's, it's simple enough to just change the number in Article I. You know, we don't need to pay someone to do that. You know, as you start to get into more elaborate policies, that's something where, you know, again, potentially can do it in-house, but, you know, that may be something that, if they're going to have their hands on it, we'll want them to do it, and that's, that's another expense.
Okay. All right. So are we, do we want to put a number on it and just ask them what they can do for that, for a specific price?
How much grant money do you have available, Tim?
It's probably around $20,000. It was a $50,000 grant. I think we contracted with RKG for 29,000 out of that.
Yeah, I would say, we, someone had asked to keep a few, I think Sean maybe had asked to keep a, a little bit of funding, a little bit of the funds available for RKG.
Yeah, I think we had some.
Yeah, we still have money in their contracts. I think, I think they, they invoiced us for something like 23 or 24,000. So there's money, there's money in that contract that we could use to kind of bring them back for a follow-up. So, so the, the extra 20,000 is truly extra.
All right, so I guess I would say, I would suggest using the full 20 that we have and get as far as we can with what we asked for.
But maybe they should give us a valued customer discount.
I think so. We give them a lot of business.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. I would support going up to the 20. We had authorized up to 15, but I think up to the 20 and as far as they can provide, which seems reasonable.
If they can also write the zoning?
Yeah, so write the zoning, 15%, eight-unit trigger.
And the contribution.
We'll look at the contribution number from Lexington and that's the four things.
And all done by May town meeting.
That's, that's the big part.
Well, no, Tim said it doesn't have to be-
Right, so the language, the language.
The language has to be written, but the study doesn't have to be.
So what I'll say is this, that there's, there's a decent amount of confidence that 15% in town of Milton will pencil. Everything, everything else is up for grabs and needs to be analyzed. So like, you know, this is a situation where if you were to write zoning that said, you know, eight-unit trigger and, you know, we're going to do that, like, these are things that I don't think we, we necessarily have confidence on. So that's the, the type of thing where like 15%, we just, we, we know that the analysis will bear that out. It's just a waiting game. Other stuff is, is truly, you know, needs to be analyzed and kind of borne out, you know, by that. So just, I would keep that in mind when you think about what would go into an article for May versus what we need to wait on an analysis for.
So a quick question. If they, if they go for 17% or they, they study 17, I'm sorry, they analyze 17%, then it doesn't work, and then we have to scale it back to 15, there wouldn't be an additional charge for that, right? Does that make sense? Does that question make sense? Like, they wouldn't come back and say, well, we got to re, we reanalyze it at 15%, so that's another four grand?
I, I don't have an answer for that question. So I, I'd have to, I'd have to ask them about that.
Yeah, because usually when you scale back a request, then the, it's, it should be the same.
Kind of baked in, but-
It should be the same price, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if they did 15%, they get to a point, it's either yes or no. Then we need another, any of the answer is, can it be more than 15? Or if it's not 15, it doesn't work, what does work? Is it 13? Is it 14? They have to test it out.
Right, so they will have already done the work, I guess is the answer.
They have to test it out.
Yeah, so they will, they will have already done the work.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so do you start at 17? Yeah, that's why I think-
I think you start at 17.
Start at 17 and then dial it back.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. No?
Well, if we put 15 in the zoning, we can ask for the analysis to be on 17, I suppose.
Let's, let's do that.
Yeah, but, I mean, so you, you would need to, you know, if, if 17 doesn't work, like, I, we'll have to talk to them and see how this analysis actually works, because ultimately what you're asking them to do is give you or provide the analysis that will go to HLC to back up whatever number is in our zoning. And so, you know, it may not necessarily be as simple a matter as like, okay, 17 didn't work out, so we know that 15 will. You know, that'll need to be explicitly analyzed and shown, you know, in the math that they, that they pass on to HLC. So you really do need to be specific about what you're asking for. And, and, you know, again, I know, I know everyone wants to do as much as is possible, but it's also, you know, we're going from not having any affordable housing policy in this town in history to a relatively complex set of policies. And, you know, budget aside, I think also, you know, 15% is a lot. And, and I think, you know, going back to the conversation about, you know, city of Boston, you know, a good, a good way to get higher affordability percentages is to allow higher height and higher density, which I think, based on our previous conversation, we're not really ready to do that. So I, I think, you know, again, my, my advice would be to stick to what we know is going to work and then, you know, continue to incrementally improve it. But, but also, you know, you need to be specific about what you want. So I will, I will talk to MAPC about, you know, getting specific budget numbers on additional scope items. You know, we're authorized to spend up to $20,000. I think that should get us, you know, the, the analysis that we're looking for. The, the question that I had is when we talk about an eight-unit threshold and then a contribution, what, what is that contribution specifically?
The contribution would be for less than eight units. So if you had a seven-unit development, a six-unit development, that you would make, you know, whatever contribution amount makes financial sense. We're, we were saying that Lexington should be our guiding, our guide at this point. And that way, at least there's some opportunity, if there's enough of these smaller developments, that the Affordable Housing Trust could actually secure a unit or two somewhere through that contribution. So, or-
And I would think it would be like two units or more, because the zoning allows up, it starts at three.
So it has to be-
But that was one of my questions. Does it actually have to be three? Can they, can a single-family house only become a two-family?
So that was something that I think, Tim, I've asked Tim about recently, too. So that should be another amendment that we do for May is the, can we do that, Tim?
Yeah.
Because right now the definition is-
So the way, the way that the zoning is written right now, because multifamily is a specific use, that means three or more units. You know, on Elliott Street in particular, where it says, you know, multifamily is the allowed use, that means that, you know, traditionally, you know, if, if you were on, you know, in, in the Milton Station sub-district and there's a number, it's, you know, 45 units per acre, you know, you could absolutely build 40 units per acre, you know, the 45 is a maximum, and still be, you know, you're, you're building multifamily definitionally according to the definitions in the zoning. When you've got a three-unit building, because three-unit is the minimum number of units in a multifamily building, if you were to build two units, you would not be building a multifamily building, and technically, you would not be building a, a use that's allowed. And so when, when Charles says that's an amendment, you know, it's one thing that you would maybe want to consider, you know, and, and, you know, potentially steer people in this direction of, yes, you can build up to three units, you can also build two units if you wanted, you know, that's kind of-
And we'd still, we would still get credit for three?
Well, because the, because the zoning allows for three, yes. So again, you just got to remember that this, what we're, what we're getting, you know, quote unquote, credit for is what the zoning allows, not what actually gets built. So if fewer units than three gets built, HLC doesn't care about that, because the zoning technically allows you to build three.
And I, and I do think if we do that, more will be built. So RKG said that along Elliott Street, the likelihood of, you know, going, building three is going to be slower because it has so many properties, but I think the likelihood is increased when you go to a, when you decrease or to allow for two.
So that's the other definition also, was that it had, it couldn't be in a separate structure, because you had to have two units in a structure in order to be considered multifamily. So that, you know, some people might want to add a second unit in a separate structure. And this is one of the problems I had with this whole definition in the beginning, was that that's the more likely thing that people might do and you could get housing. It's kind of like, why wouldn't that be sort of counting? But, so, Tim, if we were going to do the definition, you're sure that we can change the definition and still be compliant?
Change the definition of what?
Well, I thought what you had said to me in an email when I asked about this, is that we would have to change the, the definition in order to be able to allow a two-family and where three units is the, was required by the zoning.
It wouldn't be a change to the definition. It wouldn't be a change to the definition. You would have to change the, either the applicability or the allowed uses. I mean, basically, you would have to acknowledge somewhere that two-family is allowed.
As we're zoning for two families.
You don't need to specifically call that out. You can't change the definition of multifamily because that's a state definition. But you can, in the applicability, in the use table and the allowed uses...
Okay.
...you know, acknowledging that two-family is an allowed use.
Is it an allowed use as it stands? I thought it was.
That's the question we have. In certain areas that we zone for, there are existing two-families, but they're grandfathered in.
Right.
But it's not, I think people have had this question, and it hasn't been 100% clear. Can I add a unit to a single-family in that?
I thought you could.
And they can't.
Can't, okay.
Unless we change this. And I think it's something that...
They would have had to add two units.
Yes. And they have to be...
It's a good thing.
And as far as the definition or the applicability is concerned, they basically have to be in the same structure or attached to the, in addition to the structure. And to me, that's sort of like, why make that a requirement? Like, what is it about that that makes it...
Because you're saving open space.
Well, you know, you still keep the open space because you're making, now you have to do fire separations between the units. And if you have a little bit of landscape...
You take the existing footprint, you cut it in half, you're not shaving over...
I think we're getting off, that's a future discussion. But, so, Tim, do you, are you clear on what we're asking, asking MAPC?
Yeah, I'm clear on it. I don't think it's a great idea and I don't think that HLC is going to go along with it. When I said earlier that, you know, when they said below eight units, what they said to me was any inclusionary requirement on a sub, an eight-unit project, they don't have confidence that that type of thing would pencil out. I think, you know, going as far down as, you know, requiring a payment from a three-unit project is, you know, we wouldn't do that from a one-unit project. At least we haven't done it, you know, and kind of the difference is kind of minimal at that point. You know, we can certainly, we can certainly ask how much, you know, it would cost to sort of evaluate that. I just, I don't think, I don't think it's something we should be evaluating in the first place.
All right. Let's look at what Lexington has, because I really don't, I don't remember at this point. But I feel like they did have some contribution, but if not, you know, we can, we could table that for a further study. But I think if we could put a contribution in and if other towns have been successful in doing that, it would be worthwhile.
I think it could be minimal, even if we're five grand a unit. It's something in the Affordable Housing Trust that can get you somewhere. I'm just saying, you know...
And we won't have that number tonight.
It's not something that's going to kill it.
Okay. All right. So let's move forward on that and we'll pick up that discussion on the 22nd, put that on as an agenda item. And then just the last thing was the discussion on site plan approval procedures. We had talked about whether we would want, I don't think we really have time to get into that tonight, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn soon. But I do want us to think about, and, Tim, maybe you can just address this. You said, just what your conversation was with Karis, that, that I believe there was a town that she really liked their site plan approval?
Yeah, she's actually working on amendments in Natick. They're actually bringing them, I think, to their annual town meeting. So I don't know if they have language that's quite ready for primetime yet, but I'll check in with her again. And she said that it sounded like Natick was doing similar things to what we're interested in doing. So that'll be some of the latest and greatest. But I think generally, you know, what she and Peter Mello said was, you know, the planning board should feel free to kind of, you know, create, you know, their wish lists or Christmas tree or whatever it is of, you know, policies and procedures that they'd like to see. You know, Josh and I can kind of do our best to kind of, you know, create a skeleton of language around that.
That would be great, Tim.
At which point, you know, Town Council's office would then kind of polish that up. But I'll follow up with Karis about the Natick language and see if there's anything available that we can start to review.
But that would be great, Tim, if you could do a framework and maybe send it out to us. We can look at it and then come back with our inputs. I don't know...
Super helpful.
If we could get this done for May. It's aspirational, but it's, it would be, I think, great too.
I mean, we could try and get as much as we can get done because it would be better than what we have. So that's something I feel more comfortable getting in the bare minimum and then going back.
And adding to it.
And then adding to it.
So, you know, we had sent around, I think we had sent around a couple examples of site plan approvals. And if we haven't, we can, we can continue to do that. But I think what would be helpful for us is, you know, things that you've seen that you like in other towns. You know, we don't have to talk about it. You know, you can just send those along and we'll start to kind of process them. But, you know, I kind of, you know, we've heard, you know, bits and pieces over the course of the last 10 years of what you all kind of are interested in. But it would be good to kind of, you know, hear specifically, like, you know, we'd like to work this in. And that'll be helpful for us, you know, because, you know, a framework or an outline, you know, it's...
So I'm going to suggest that you take what we put into the MBTA zoning. I use my nine years of experience on this board about what I wish we had in our zoning that I could have asked for in term, whether it's, a lot of submission requirements, a lot of document that's required. And I did do research for that. I watched a webinar. I told you all that. I looked at others. So, you know, I think everyone should take a look at that because it's a lot more robust than what we have in our general. And I think, you know, we should put that in as a starting point. And then if there's other things that people have, I don't know about the legality of some of the other stuff, but I felt that, based on the sources that I looked at for that, and, Tim, you included it in Article I. So I don't, you know, one thing, when it's as of right, we have to be careful about what can be the basis of a denial. But we can ask for, and we can have peer review in site plan review, which is something I learned in that webinar from Judy Barrett. It's like, we don't have peer review in our site plan. We only have it in our special permit right now. And so, like, to me, like, that was something important to include. So I just suggest that everyone really take a look at those. There's a lot of information in there.
Okay.
Good.
Great. Anything else on that, Tim, before we adjourn?
Yeah, I think we're good.
We're good. All right. So we'll have that on also as a standing, future meeting. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, thank you.